All right, everybody, we're getting started now, so welcome to the October 22nd, 2024, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, liberating, justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on cause or judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up, sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meetings on September 10th and September 24th, both 6:30, and then the special meeting on September 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We've got a couple housekeeping items I'd like to address. The first item is, staff is requesting to withdraw item 8B, which is the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, DEP grant award for Resilient Florida Planning Grant.
Need a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
I'd make that motion, but tell me which item it is.
Item 8B.
8B.
First reading, Outdoor Storage. Okay, 8B.
Okay.
Eight.
8E.
8B.
8B is in boy.
He is in boy.
The Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Well, start over. I've got a motion from Member Stokel, a second. Did you just make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, a second for Member Stokel, and a motion for Member Nelson. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? All right, City Manager?
The City Attorney has an additional item to add to the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like a motion from Council to add an agenda item under the City Attorney's report. I've received a request from an attorney representing a property owner that's requested a letter from the city confirming that the Architectural Review Board for properties in the north of our industrial park has ceased to exist in accordance with those deed restrictions. So I'd like to put that under my report for your consideration.
Member Nelson?
I'd move to add that.
Has stated?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? It is accepted. A couple other things here. I know that we do have a, what I'll call the main event, and I'm going to try to get a couple people in front of that main event. So I'm looking at, and City Attorney advised me on what I'm doing here. I'm wanting to get Titusville Resort and Destination F in front of the main event. I say that because clearly that's the main event, so.
What you're asking is you'd like to move item 8F, which is the rezone number 3-2024 Titusville Resort and Destination Master Plan. You'd like to move that following item 9C.
I would need a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to make that move. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, so this, rest assured, that's not going to be a long one. I would think not. So F moves to where again?
Right after 9C, which is the ordinance number 43, 2024, conditional use permit, legal ad requirements.
You will guide me as we go. All right, I have had someone approach me who is part of the nine, hold on a minute, D and E, is that what I'm looking at? Yeah, the main event, as you want to call it, D and E. Clearly, we have a lot of people here, and I had someone, and I'll certainly let you know who that is, who has asked for an extended time and be the presenter for the group, and I don't know if that's the entire group, and that's great. But we did that with another group, and we had the presenter, and we had, gosh, 20 minutes, and we got so much out of it, and then all of a sudden everybody else decided, well, we want to talk too. So I don't mind doing that, but I'm not going to have a 15 or 20-minute presentation, and then all of a sudden, we've got 30 or 40 cards over here, too. So if you would stand and let them know who the presenter is looking to be, and I don't know how many of you feel that way, but if she presents and is giving the time, how many of you are, well, let me start over, ask that differently, how many of you would still want to speak after she presents? After she presents, giving her adequate time? Can you hear me?
What portion of the SSA is she doing? Is she doing the south area or the north area?
I haven't spoken to her about what she's going to say. She just came to me and said that the group would like her to present, and if that's the case, sometimes it is much more organized, and sometimes when you get into these, and I get it, but when you have 50 speakers, you have a lot of repetitive things, and if you have one speaker who takes longer than a lot of time, and we gave, basically give presentation, that sometimes is much more effective for all of us. But what I don't want to see happen is we give her the extended 15-plus minutes, and then we got the presentation, and then it's, oh, no, I want to say this, and I want to say that. If that's the case, we'll just go with the, run through the cards and do what we have to do. Go ahead. Go ahead, step up here for me real quick.
Mayor, he's a good microphone.
So my name is Jill Dobson. I'm representing primarily 9E on the agenda tonight. The individuals that are sitting here with me have asked me to be their spokesperson for 9E. I would be one of the only speakers from the South 2-2024 Small Scale Amendment, my husband and I. The other project, part of the project, 1-2024 North Side, 9D on the agenda, have their own representation. I am not representing the people in the north side of the project.
Okay, okay, thank you. That helps me with what you're saying there. Thank you. Okay, so 9E, if she speaks on 9E and does a presentation, who would want to still speak after that? Not, not you guys. We're, we're going to come to you in a second. Okay, so, and that's still 9E?
9E. Yeah, sir.
Go ahead.
Can you ask them to raise their hands if they are willing to give up their time for her to speak? Because I think there's a hands, a lot of them.
Yeah, there are those. I see that.
Which I think it would be.
But that's not my, I know that's going to happen. My concern is, and we did this with the previous group, all of a sudden, we got done with the long presentation, and then all these people are, oh, I still want to talk, and we ended up, that was our 5:00 in the morning meeting. So we're trying to make sure we don't get redundant here. Okay, have, go ahead and have a seat. We'll go from there. And 9...
Does 9D have a presenter too, or no?
Was it 9D?
So that was 9E.
9D, is there a presenter at 9D?
Or is it, so there's, there's no presenter?
Okay, how many people want to speak on 9D? This, okay.
9D?
9D.
D. Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm going to, well, do I need to vote on that to say I want to do that? I think it looks to me like she has the support, and they want her to go ahead and be their representative, and if that's the case, I would go give her 15 minutes and give a presentation for 9E.
That's fine. When 9E comes up, we'll confirm that again when she comes up.
And then 9D, make it E and D, that sounds too much like, but you're the Ds. Okay, okay, you're the Ds. I'm not going to say you're the Fs, okay? So, all right, so that's what we'll do. We'll get to that, and I appreciate your cooperation. I really do. Thank you. You're a fine group, and we'll go from there. I absolutely forget where we're at now.
So one more housekeeping item, sir. I'd like to move, under Old Business 11A, which is Community Development Block Grant Program Budget Amendment for Action Plan Implementation to, after consent.
After consent?
Yes, sir.
Member Nelson?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, you guys are going to have to remind me where we just moved everything to, because things just got crazy. Okay.
We are now on item 5A, which is the Department Spotlight. This is the City Clerk's office, and I'm not going to make Wanda get off the dice, but if you have any questions, Wanda is there to answer it.
Do you have a video?
Yeah, we have a video, right?
The City Clerk's office is the information source for citizens as well as the municipal organization. The office performs three vital functions: administer the legislative process, facilitate public participation in governmental processes, and protect and manage the public record. First, administer the legislative process. Here, the office provides notice of City Council meetings, prepares the City Council agenda at the discretion of the City Manager, attends all City Council and Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA, meetings, and prepares the minutes, and furthermore, the office oversees the codification of ordinances that amend the city's codes. In 2023, the office noticed and published 39 regular and special City Council agenda packets totaling 18,750 pages, attended 12 CRA and 39 City Council meetings totaling 112 hours, spent 300 to 350 hours preparing City Council and CRA meeting minutes totaling 549 pages, and submitted 18 legislative ordinances approved by City Council for incorporation into the city's code volumes. In total, 68 sections of the code and LDR received changes. Second, facilitate public participation. Here, the office facilitates public participation at City Council and CRA meetings, oversees board member applications, advertising, and appointments of citizens appointed by the City Council to the city's boards, conducts municipal elections for citizens that desire to run for City Council, provides legal advertising on upcoming public hearings, and additionally, our staff serves as liaisons to the Student Advisory Council and Titusville Community Service Award Committee. In 2022 and 2023, the office oversaw 112 board member positions, received 18 board applications from citizens, scheduled 31 requests on the council agenda for board member appointments, reappointments, et cetera, assisted seven candidates that qualified for City Council in 2022 and 2024, verified 117 campaign treasurer reports during the 2022 election. In regards to public notice, staff published 81 legal ads for proposed ordinances and land use changes, mailed 2,111 postcards to neighboring property owners on upcoming public hearings, and created 48 temporary signs to notice passing traffic of land use hearings. Staff also attended meetings and prepared the agendas and minutes for nine Student Advisory Council and two Community Service Award meetings, assisted the Student Advisory Council in hosting a mock City Council meeting, as well as assisted City Council in issuing $3,000 in scholarships to graduating senior board members. In addition, 90 individuals were honored at the 2023 Boards and Commissions Recognition Ceremony, and 265 students from 15 schools were recognized at the annual student awards ceremony. Third, protect and manage the public record. Here, the office protects, manages, stores, and provides security and regulatory destruction procedures for public records entrusted to the office, per rules set by Florida statutes, Florida Administrative Code, and city policy. Staff prioritizes and promotes digital scanning projects through other city departments, empowering and equipping departments to scam, import, retain, and manage electronic records rather than maintain records in paper form. Manages and oversees the city's electronic records database, Laserfish, creating user accounts, setting security per user, ensuring digital image requirements, et cetera, oversees city administrative policy on public records, responds to public records requests, and redacts exempt information prior to release as Florida statutes provide more than 1,000 exemptions for information that may be exempt from public inspection. To continue, the office trains new employees on public records, provides ongoing training and access to resources for the electronic records database, provides research for other departments, and annually prepares and submits records management compliance reports to the state. Sharing brief sample data from 2023, the City Clerk's office responded to over 386 public records requests from the public and others, trained 32 employees on records management and archiving records, trained 26 employees for newly created Laserfish accounts, added 777,801 pages to Laserfish, which housed over four terabytes or millions of digital records, initiated digital imaging projects with other departments, one example being a project digitizing 266 banker boxes of paper development records that require long-term retention. 139 boxes have been scanned to date. Moreover, the office is presently expanding the capabilities of Laserfish, using the software to streamline processes, install collaborative workflows, and more. To continue, the office provides mail courier services to all departments. In 2023, our courier drove 7,308 miles to the city's many departments, picking up internal and external mail. As a result, 67,015 pieces of outgoing mail were metered and mailed. To conclude, the City Clerk's office serves in many capacities to benefit both citizens and the municipal organization through the performance of its three vital functions mentioned previously. With this, we hope you have enjoyed the information provided on the Titusville City Clerk's office.
Wow, nice video. Well done, and it's really kind of cool, because normally we show this at presentations, meetings, and there's only five or six people out there to see it. So we're glad you all showed up for this one. So, so you got the record there, Ms. Clerk. So, thank you guys very much. Every time I see one of these, no matter the department, I'm always amazed at the numbers. You know, how many miles the courier traveled, and how many notifications you sent out, and how many treasurer reports, whatever, that called for the candidates. I mean, it just goes on and on. So thank you all very, very much. I appreciate you. Let's do that. There's a lot of people here. Thank you, guys. City Manager?
On to Boards and Commissions. The first is item 6A, which is the Historic Preservation Board, and you're requested to appoint three regular members and one alternate member to the Historic Preservation Board with a term to expire on 31 October 2026. The terms of regular members, Dennis Jones, Tony Shifalo, and Deborah Pettick, and alternate member Kirk Davis, Davies, excuse me, all expire on 31 October 2024. Regular members Jones, Shifalo, Pettick, and Kirk, or Davis, have all expressed their willingness to desire to continue to serve on this board and have requested a reappointment to another two-year term to expire on 31 October 2026. There currently are no other applications on file for your consideration.
First thing I would say is, I think this is a very outstanding board and passionate about what you do, and we've been very blessed to have you guys, and some of the things you've accomplished, and the ownership you take of this, is, this board is, is well noted. With that said, I know I have a couple of the folks who are going to be voted on to be reappointed here, and so I certainly think if you wish to come up and say a word, you certainly are willing, able to do that. Mr., Tony and Kurt, I know are here. I'm sorry? Okay, there you go. So.
Stuck on the people's podium.
Start her up.
Tony Shifalo, the Historic Norwood House. It seems like yesterday I stood before you to request reappointment to the Historic Preservation Board. However, it's been two full years, and a busy time it's been. It's not pertinent for any one of the four of us seeking reappointment to stand before you as no one else has stepped up. So it's a moot point if you want to keep the board functioning, but I'd like to point out that with the four of us, we represent a total of 27 years of service on the Historic Preservation Board.
Wow.
27 years. With consistent membership, we've built upon the preservation work done by the board since its inception in 2011. We have a couple of surveys, and in the five years I've served on the board, we've produced three more major projects: the world-famous three-hour tour.
That was amazing.
The architectural guidelines, so that everybody, even in the CRA, knows what to do, and the documentation of our lost African-American business district in Joinerville and beyond. By reappointing the four of us, you acknowledge not that no one else stepped up, rather, you value the work this board is doing, and you want it to continue. And let me point out, no one else stepped up not because our fellow citizens do not value Titusville history and its representative structures, Member Cole, but rather because they know it's hard work, and it takes dedication to uncover and trace the past road to our present reality, and even harder work trying to maintain its remnants from total annihilation or extinction, and to map a way to our future. Therefore, thank you for your vote of confidence in reappointing this group of dedicated citizens to your hard-working advisory Historic Preservation Board.
Thank you, Tony, and, and we do, and I love that little booklet. That's, that was always.
This is great, and we're adding Joinerville to it.
That's awesome. It should be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and the esteemed Council. I can't say anything to add. I don't have anything to add to what Tony's already said. My name is Kirk Davis.
Thank you.
And I'm at 3740 Hickory Park Drive here in Titusville, longtime resident. And it's been an awesome experience being a part of the Historic Preservation Board, and one of the major projects that we undertook this year has been the Joinerville and Beyond Project, which is to capture the historic value of our Black community here in Titusville from its genesis until the present day. And I invite the members of the community to go on the city's website and get a load of this document. It's filled with a lot of history that's relevant, particularly for our young people, and, and it's also an awesome product to extend the interest and hopefully encourage more interest in our history here of the Black community here in Titusville. And again, I, I thank you, the city of Titusville, for allowing this to go forward, and we're looking for larger things to come in the future, and hopefully we can gather more interest from the community to be involved with this project. So all, all that I want to say is thank you again for allowing me to renew my license as being a part of the Historic Preservation Board. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Davis. I don't know if we call it a license, but we sure appreciate you being there. License to serve. Anybody else on that board want to come up and say anything, or, yeah, come on up. Come on up.
Debbie Pettick, I live at 1237 Little Oaks Circle. I guess I would be remiss not to come up here and say thank you for reappointing me, and thank you for supporting us. I love the Historic Preservation Board, and I really love that City Council will start helping us. You know, we don't need all these new projects in these wetland areas. We need to restore our history. And it's, and it's really been a little bit difficult, because people don't want to designate their homes because they're afraid we'll really, you know, tie them down and so forth, but, you know, we're not here. We're here to help, and we just want to have a beautiful city and protect it. So thanks again for renewing my license.
Thank you very much. Anyone else over there, Clerk?
We have one more card at Stan Johnston.
Imagine that.
Thank you, Tony, Mr. Davis, and Debbie, the Historic Preservation Board. And I'm especially not, I'm especially concerned not just with what happened in the past, but the history that's going to be coming, and that history has to do with a number of things that are going right now, like, for example, transformation of, of Titusville into a little Miami, the sea level rise, the, the pollution of the Indian River and condition it is, the, the incorrect FEMA maps that I pointed out that nobody's listening to, the culverts under I-95 that are not functioning because water's not going through it, and it's, it's, there's, the canals are, are clogged going to Indian River, and the sustainability issues, climate change, and so forth. So what's going on today is going to be looked at 50 years from now, is what did we do? Because we're in a, we're in a big crisis situation that we don't know what's going to happen. So I'm, I'm mentioning these things because I'm asking them to, to be sure to, to keep, to preserve what's, what's happening now in, in the history that's, that's to be. So thank you for that, and thank you for Tony, and Debbie, and Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Can we make the motion for all at once? Okay, so, Member Nelson?
I'm going to make the motion to appoint Dennis Jones, Tony Shifalo, Debbie Pettick as regular members, and Kirk Davis as an alternate to the Historic Preservation Board until, for a term to expire on October 31st, 2026, and I want to say they've done a wonderful job.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you, and the wonderful job part is, can be put in there if you wish, because it's been an amazing board. I have the motion and the second. Roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
With appreciation and thank you. Passed unanimously. Appreciate you guys. City Manager?
Consent, or correction, petitions and requests from the public present, non-agenda items?
Non-agenda items. Non-agenda items, so all you guys have agenda items, so, except Stan. Come on, Stan. All right, Stan.
Stan, Stan Johnston, I sent you an email yesterday, and it's titled something like, "Today, either terminate city manager for many causes or request that Mayor Diesel and all other council members resign." That's from me, and so you know about it. So, this email, does anyone wish to make a motion to terminate city manager?
Nope.
You're speaking for everybody.
I'm speaking for myself. I always do.
Okay, so, so I have, would you hand out what they have? I have a response to that because I anticipated that you wouldn't do it, and you understand is this is, one of the big reasons is because the city of Titusville has been spraying, has a policy for over three years and 10 months to spray women and children and babies with sewage and by leaving the fountains turned on in public parks when there's a sewage spill. So, that policy's been in effect and it's been, it's been confirmed even at the last council meeting. I think about different things. I think about, well, you know, we go to church and we have this thing that says, "Do unto others as you would have done unto you," and I would think, what in the world are you guys thinking by leaving the fountains on? I think about the thing that Mr., maybe Mr. Past, Mr. Pastor Joe might be interested in. It says, "Perfect love casts out fear, casts out all fear." Well, golly, how can you possibly love your neighbor when you're spraying them with sewage? How can you possibly think about other people or represent the people when you certainly don't follow the rule, "Do unto others as you would have done unto you"? What could you possibly tell your children what you're doing? So, understand is that I'm, this is dated today, this, what you just received, and it is a draft of your misconduct, and it says, "Please be advised that I will again request investigation into your, in city's misconduct." Understand, this goes to the governor, this goes to FEMA, this goes to FBI even, because I'm not getting any support from anybody in Florida at this time for this misconduct of yours. I see it as criminal activity on your part, false reports and so forth. That's a felony, but I think you believe you have immunity, and maybe you do. Immunity is politicians, but I question whether you do have immunity, so I'll be following reports requesting investigations of your activity. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have extra time?
No, you're good.
I don't think so.
Any other petition requests?
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs, reside on Riverside Drive. My wife and I purchased property in 2002 on Riverside Drive and built a home and a dock in 2003. I labeled this as my saga dealing with the sewer system on Riverside Drive. In 2003, the old Gray Street Lift Station was still in use and sorely needed painting. I asked the city manager, Tom Hare, and utility director to do so, and if they would not, I would paint it. They did not respond to me, so I went ahead and painted it in the same color as my home. I just had completed, and my neighbor assisted me, Ron Norris. Because I had painted the Gray Street Lift Station, the Bayview Lift Station down the street, a neighbor complained because theirs hadn't been painted, and the city did paint it, thank goodness. In addition to its appearance, I quickly learned that the lift station that was located there after a significant rain event would seep sewage out the sides of it and overflow directly into the river. I learned that by talking with the city staff because the lift station, when installed at Titusville High School, was, the force main was overpowering the Gray Street Lift Station, and they could not do its job, and this occurred frequently. I thought this was wrong, that the sewage would overflow directly into the river, and ultimately, the Gray Street Lift Station was replaced, trying to address the obvious flaws. Fast forward to September 2017, the hurricane Irma hit and caused significant damage along the river and extreme erosion. The sewer force main just north of Bayview Lift Station was exposed but not breached. The city did a Band-Aid approach to repairing the exposed sewer lift station, put some fabric mesh fill and some small koala stones over it. It was obvious that any future storm would not hold it in another storm, and that's exactly what happened with Hurricane Milton. This time, there was a breach in the sewer system down the road, and a significant amount of raw sewage went into the river, and again, it has been temporarily repaired. Shortly after Irma in 2017, we were told that the force main on the east side of Riverside Drive would be moved to the west side of the street. As a matter of fact, the crew from Kimbley Horn came out and plugged all the utilities, my private electric lines into the road, the water lines, et cetera.
Hold up. How much, how much time you need?
Probably two more minutes if I could, please.
All right, let's go two minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. They flagged it, and they told us there would be a community meeting to discuss the planned project. This was four years ago. We have never had a community meeting. In the meantime, we have tried frankly to do our part to help clean up the river by participating with Bivard Zoo in the Orchard Project, the Clam Project, the Sea Grass Restoration Project, and obviously, when the city allows raw sewage to dump into the river, all our efforts are in vain. It has been seven years and no progress has been made on relocating the sewer line and the force main to the other side of the street, and it's obviously a serious situation. My petition or request from you simply is, have plans to relocate the force main been drawn and completed? When will there be a community meeting as promised? Has the project been advertised for bid? When will the job be started and completed? What plans are there to stabilize and protect Riverside Drive from future storms, which obviously it is in jeopardy? Did your consultant advise you you cannot do the Sandpoint Project and South Street Project and not do the Riverside Drive Project at the same time? Did he advise you that? I do not fault Kevin Cook at all for this mess he has inherited. However, those in the administration and on council for the last seven years have a duty and obligation to protect the public health and welfare of your citizens, and have you done that. During the last five years, how often have you asked, what is the status of this project? Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight. Hey, a lot of applause tonight.
I think we asked last week.
Say it again?
I think we asked the status of the project last week.
Yeah. Let me get with Kevin real quick.
Okay.
Kevin, give me a little bit of a summary there because I can, I know that you, we just, I think we kind of gave the summary last week as well, but clearly, we have a project that's being completed, a $9 million project to move the sewer lines off the river, and unfortunately, we didn't get to all of it. So, give me a little idea of what we got going on.
Sure. The $9 million is on the Indian River Force Main, which would be the section beyond from South Street to Osprey, which is the last piece of directional drills done this week. So, that would be coming online by the end of the calendar year. We'll have some clearance testing still to do, so forth. I think the area that Mr. Severs is most interested in is Riverside Drive's force main. So, I spoke to the consultant last week, and we're advancing the force main replacement ahead of the lift station connections and so forth to clear up the Riverside Drive. We'll have that out to a contractor by the end of the calendar year. So, we hope to have construction. These are more readily-available materials in the River Force Main. Be complete bi-directional drilling. We hope to have a schedule ready back to the council after the first of the year of when they'll be on site. Again, this will take the force main from the riverside to place it under the road, on the west side of the road. Placing bi-directional drill means less impact to the roadway itself. We'll be able to drill a couple thousand feet at a time, expedite construction, and lowers the cost of having to open cut the entire road. So, we did shorten the project to break it into two pieces. The remaining section along THS Lift Station will be done, Crossing US will be done in a separate phase, and since that section's further away from the river, more protected, it will be done. It'll be done in a period six to 12 months beyond the first phase. The other lift stations, Seminole and Bayview, which is the Resiliency Project that FDEP is assisting in funding, which will eliminate the Bayview Lift Station completely, that's sitting at 90% as of about two weeks ago. So, final comments going in for that one, which will move forward. That will probably be about a three-year build because Seminole itself might be rebuilt completely, and at that time, the Bayview Lift Station will be taken out of service completely, and their gravity rerouted to the Seminole Lift Station basin. So, all of those combining is about a three-year to three-and-a-half-year window to get the force mains in that area and the lift stations replaced.
All right. Thank you very much. I can tell you that that is a project we get an update on, at least. I've certainly asked about it. It seems like monthly. We've been looking to get the sewer lines off the river, and they're doing that, and that's what all the construction's been behind the building here, and unfortunately, there is timeframes that we can't get to. So, that being said, I'm assuming we have a second speaker? Yes. Okay, thank you, Dwight.
I'm Laura Severs. I live on Riverside Drive. A couple of weeks ago, some statements were made by council about the returning health of our river, and I'm here to tell you that those statements are just partially true. The return of sea grass beds may be true for Mosquito Lagoon, as my husband and my son have told me, they look great, and the east side of the Indian River where they like to fish, but that's not true for the river within the city limits of Titusville. Twenty-one years ago, when we moved to Riverside Drive, the sea grass at our riverfront was lush and green and teeming with life. When our now 16-year-old granddaughter was about five, when she come to visit, she explored the river and enjoyed all kinds of animals: tiny crabs, grass shrimp, needlefish, pufferfish, baby mullet, sea trout, redfish, blue crabs, and seahorses. Sadly, over the last 10 years, we began to witness the gradual decline in the amount of sea grass and the types and numbers of animals and plants and fish that lived in the water, and there are no mullet jumping anymore in the river. And that day 10 years ago was the last time we saw a seahorse at our dock, and we have no lush forests of sea grass, only a sprout or two here and there. And in spite of all of our efforts to try to restore it by participating in the zoo's sea grass program, we have very little success with any of that. I would like it just to be known that even though possibly Mosquito Lagoon and the east side of the river are coming back with wonderful beds of sea grass, it's not happening in our city limits. And I'd invite you to come to our dock sometime, and you can walk out there, and you can witness it, the devastation that's happened in the last 10 years. So, I encourage you to stop putting sewage and run off into our river. What has been done so far to clean it up is not enough to stop what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, I would agree with you that we are not where we want to be. On the other hand, I remember several years ago when I couldn't find a piece of sea grass out there. So, you have to celebrate at least making that one step. I think, for me, one of the things that we need to do is look at the septic tanks, because like we discussed last week, one of our presenters came in, a biologist, and he was saying that the amount of sewer that we are putting in the river with the septic tanks, 1.9 days is equal to a sewer spill. So, we're putting an awful lot of sewer into the river, and...
It's overwhelmed.
It's overwhelmed.
It can't keep up.
No.
Regeneration of anything with that kind of situation.
So, like I said last week, I sort of felt like we were fighting an uphill battle.
Still are.
And one of the things that I was going to ask tonight was if we could have Virginia Barker or one of the people from the Department of Natural Resources come and present to us, so we would know what we were facing. So, do you want me to go ahead and make that motion?
Hold on that.
Hold on that.
Hold on that. Matter of fact, may wait till our time later.
The end.
And I would just like to add, Save Our Lagoon, and I'm sure that some of you are very familiar with them, and some people don't want to hear it, but Save Our Lagoon did a presentation two years in a row now, and project delivery partnerships, meaning who's completed projects. City Titusville has completed more projects than anybody else with 11. The Bivard Zoo is second, not even the city. Cocoa Beach is third with six. Marine Resources Council is five, Melbourne's four, Cocoa's three, Indian Harbor Beach is two, Palm Bay is two, West Melbourne's two, and it goes down with a bunch of ones. I just say that only because it's not like, you know, we don't care. I was here in 1965 when we had mullet jumping all over the place, too, and it's very disheartening that, but then again, back in the day, all the sewage used to go into the, everything, I won't get into all the details, but everything was supposed to go there, and that's, we've pretty much ruined it, and we're trying to unruin it. And we've got a real big job to do, and it's going to, it's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take all of us, and we all have to agree. All right, thank you for that. Anybody else with petitions or requests that hadn't spoken? We're going to move on to the main event. All right, no we're not. We're going to have Kay St. Ange.
Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue. This is the democracy we live in. That was my sewage that went in the spill, but it's my job to make our representatives know that I don't want my sewage in the river. Thank you.
Amen. Neither do we. I agree.
Michael Majak, Alpine Lane, and recently back from the great state of Maine, where you don't get to build if the water is on the land. If it's wet, you're 250 feet away from it, period. I wanted to let you know that there are other places that realize that water is important. One of the things that I learned when I was up in Woods Hole, while their ponds are deeper than ours, and they have a little bit more chemistry involved because of the depth, it still revolves around too much nitrogen and too much phosphorus. Now, in their case, their city of about 70,000 people in Falmouth, they're all on septic tanks, and they're all on a mountainside, on a rocky crest, and their effluent from their septic tanks goes down into the rocks and into their groundwater, and that's right where their wells are. So, now they have this huge plume of pollution in their groundwater, and they just voted not to put in a sewer system because of the cost. Meanwhile, they have very similar problems. Their sea grass is dying. They have freshwater inundation in their marshes, and they have invasive plants taking over, none of which they want. Down in the bayou in Texas, same problem. In our case, we do have a smidgen of grass north of Titusville on the west side, but there isn't much of anything else, and all the way south is mostly colerpa. I saw the reports from Friday's SORAL meeting. The real problem is salinity. When Milton hit, our salinity dropped well below 20 parts per thousand. We're down in the 13s right now, right here around Max Brewer Bridge. Stuff doesn't survive in an estuary when it turns fresh. It's a completely different ecology, and we've been, I don't know how we fix good after stupid, but the flooding that we do with our stormwater, the... with our stormwater, the way it goes into our lagoon, has been set up that way since the 1950s. And we keep adding on to it, making it bigger and bigger, causing more and more flow, causing more and more problem. And it adds up. You can see what we just saw reported. It's adding up and it's getting worse. We have to find a way to put that water somewhere else. We can reservoir some of it, but the real solution is going to be putting it in the ground into the surficial aquifer using artificial surficial aquifer restoration. And it's a process where we can collect that water in our wetland areas and move that into where we need it as a resource.
Thank you, Mike. City manager.
To consent, we have items A and C. City council, are there any questions of staff that you would like to ask on consent agenda items A and C?
No, I don't see any.
City council, do you want to pull either one of the items?
I see none.
Clerk, are there cards for this item?
We have one card.
Mayor, I'd like to read the two items for the record, the titles.
Thank you.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve and accept the award for fiscal year FY '25 Bulletproof Fest grant. Consent agenda item 8C, authorize the mayor to sign permitting documents for Scobie Park Habitat Restoration Grant.
All right. Counsel, anything on those? Call the card.
Tony Shifalo for item 8C.
8C.
Shifalo Tropic Street. What can I say at this point except don't do like you've done so many times before and shoot yourselves in the foot? With Scobie Park. It's a prime public space for residents, tourists, and spaceniks to come and watch the launches across the Indian River Lagoon. Yes, save the shoreline. Yes, do it naturally. Yes, save it with proven technology of a soft living shoreline instead of filling it with rocks. But don't wreck Scobie Park as Rita and Mary Ellen did with Parish Park so that the people can't use it anymore. Preserve it without ruining its primary purpose, a public gathering space with a view of the Space Center across the lagoon. Don't plant mangroves that are going to grow up really tall. Plant other plants that will allow the shoreline to be maintained and allow us to still gather there and see the launches and the first boosters coming back and landing. Don't spoil the view. There's so little places that many of us that can't afford to live on the river can go to see it. Don't spoil the view. Plan the plantings. Plan them carefully. Thank you.
Well said.
We just received one additional card from Lauralee Thompson.
Lauralee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MIMPs. And I agree with Tony. I mean, all you gotta do is look at what happened. We had those beautiful mangroves right in the middle of Scobie Park and somebody took it on themselves to cut them down because it was blocking the launch viewing area. But this is the first time that I've seen the plans that have been proposed for Scobie Park. I don't think that you have enough shoreline protection. Those little teeny tiny 17-inch breakwaters that they're proposing to put almost right on top of the shoreline are not going to protect the shoreline. You need larger wave atten... That area right there gets pounded during a southeast wind. I mean pounded. And I don't think that they understand the dynamics of what happens in that cove because what they're proposing is not going to be enough to protect the shoreline. And I don't know if you know it, but there is damage that happened to the project on the north side of the causeway. They had pushed sand up against it to protect it, but where they ran out of sand and there was no protection, it's caved in, you know, just like we said would happen. You can't... You have to realize how the rising water and what's going to happen in the future is going to affect the shorelines here in Titusville. So I think that that... What I see in the proposal, I don't think is going to be enough to protect the shoreline in Scobie Park. It needs, Scobie Park needs bigger wave breaks further out in the lagoon to stop those big waves from crashing into the shoreline there. So those little things that they got, you know, proposed to put in the water aren't going to be enough for Scobie Park. You need something like the wave attenuation devices that are sitting out on the causeway now. You have to understand the power of the wind and water. And I don't think that what they've proposed is going to be adequate to protect that shoreline. So they'll put all their stuff in and then we get a few storms and in the shorelines are going to look exactly like it looks like now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauralee. Any other cards on that?
No, sir.
All right. What's your point of order?
I have a card on that. 8B and 8C.
On what? No, the card? Oh, well. All right, member Nelson.
I do have a question. And that's for Kevin. So one of the things that I was concerned about, and I forgot to ask you, I apologize, there's an outfall there at Scobie Park. Is that by doing this project, will we get rid of that outflow? And secondly, is there a way to shore up what's happening so that we don't go through what happened a couple of years ago where I think it was UCF planted a native shoreline and storm came through and wiped it out? I know that's two separate questions.
So there's two outfalls in Scobie Park. One is an overflow from the roadside drainage that's there. That's the large concrete structure with the skimmer that got damaged in the hurricane. The other is a pipe underneath that is actually the drainage for the commons. Both will remain. They're not being affected by this project. They won't be removed as part of this project because those drains still need to get out. As far as protection, this is a zoo project and IRL NEP project, so they designed this. This isn't a city project. They're using city property, but it's not. It's a grant for the Brevard Zoo to install. So their goal is to create a breakwater just to protect the living shoreline they're planting. The last time it was done, it was living shoreline with oyster basket underneath. Sandy was involved, UCF was involved. This is taking a step further, but this is a zoo project, so they've completed this design. So the goal would be that it would sustain through a storm, but obviously takes time to see if it will or will not for hurricane purposes. But our outfalls will remain, yes, because they, there's no reason to take them out. Then we just still need to be able to drain the commons.
Okay. Thank you. I would move to approve 9A and 9C on the consent agenda.
That'd be eight?
8A and C on the consent agenda. Thank you, although I am somewhat concerned about 8C.
And I am, too, but I look at 8C as a start in doing something, but it's not going to be adequate. And I agree and I understand that. But I'd rather do that and get something started and stay on top of it. So with that, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll have a second for vice mayor. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Consent agenda passed. You have an amnesty, city manager.
We are now on 11A, which is the Community Development Block Grant Program, CBDG Budget Amendment for Action Plan Implementation Purposes. Staff is requesting that you approve the budget amendment to transfer grant funds from a canceled task order, AECOM T005, back to CBDG project account for continued implementation of the city CBDG Action Plan for Neighborhood Services Revitalization Efforts. Terry's here to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions on that? Terry, anything you want to give us on that? This sounds like we're trying to get things right.
Yes, sir. I have nothing.
Okay. Member Nelson.
So I understand that we can't use the CBDG funds for the Joinerville project, correct?
That's correct. It didn't quite check all the boxes for the criteria for under HUD's program.
Okay. I don't have any problem doing it, but I would hope that mid-year that we go ahead and restore the funds to be able to go forward with this. It seems like a wonderful project and I would hate for us to lose it.
Member Stokel.
Yes. Do you have any idea of what you plan to do with the funds now that are getting back?
We'll be doing street resurfacing.
Street resurfacing? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from counsel? Call the card.
Tony Shifalo. And then Kay St. Ange.
Shifalo Tropic Street, the CBDG program. Other eligible activities such as street repair to address substandard conditions will be pursued. Other activities that meet the objective, street resurfacing, sidewalk improvements, lighting improvements, beautification improvements, tree planting, transportation improvements. Staff is requesting council's approval of the budget to transfer the funds back to the original line for ongoing infrastructure and beautification efforts in the South Street target area. Don't forget, it's a gateway. Staff can't offer any alternatives for grant compliance? Come on, Brad. Loss of the Joinerville Pocket Park? What a shame. Instead of convening a neighborhood meeting to discuss other possibilities, Ms. Franklin unilaterally decided to move forward with a very easy, yet in places unnecessary expenditure, street repaving. So they send out an invasive survey requiring the income of every single person residing in a home to see if the neighborhood meets the poverty level required for the funding of street repaving. We wanted a park, a public space where we could gather, meet, act neighborly, relax, and be informed of the history of Joinerville, our lost African-American business and residential neighborhood. I don't want my street a very pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly street, Brad, which is now a cool light pavement to be covered over with black asphalt which will radiate immense heat in my tree-impoverished area. That district is noted on the census, tree-impoverished. If you want to spend money on the poor people, then get with the Tree City USA program. And the wish list the residents of West Titusville expressed to have more shade trees and public spaces to gather in. Instead of spying into the income of every single resident on the considered street, I surveyed my neighbors. Hardly anybody got this form. I don't know why I did. Am I being surveilled? Asking my income, my husband's income? Anyway, instead of spying on the income of every resident, try to find an alternative way to get the empty lot behind Blues turned into a useful space, not a blight to the neighborhood on a gateway corridor, South Street. Don't turn the money away. Put it to use in ways that you like to do. Give it to a consultant to come and tell us how to turn that little area into a park.
Hey, Tony. Kay.
Kay St. Ange.
Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue. Every time I drive along South Street, I see residents sitting in this proposed park, enjoying the shade of the trees and discussing whatever they need to discuss. Build a park for the people on this city property. Street paving should be funded by city taxes, not HUD money. I have read the Neighborhood Revitalization Action Plan and attended several meetings. This plan has a component, beautification improvements through tree planting. Use the money for tree planting. As a leader of the Titusville Tree Team, we are keen on seeing tree equity addressed with the planting of trees in low-income areas. Titusville Tree Canopy has been measured for each neighborhood by American Forest. Some neighborhoods have only 19%, while other neighborhoods have 55%. Guess which ones have only 19? The low-income neighborhoods. Trees in neighborhoods provide many benefits, reducing temperatures, encouraging residents to exercise outdoors, resulting in less stress and less crime. Trees increase property values. Trees reduce flooding and reduce polluted stormwater runoff into the lagoon. The lagoon brings $7 million annually to our region. Use these funds to plant trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Vice mayor.
Yes, Terry. Did they, did you have a dollar amount that they were asking for, out of the CBDG dollars for Joiner Park?
We have budgeted the 122,000 for the conceptual studies and design. The park equation itself has not been, was not budgeted yet.
For the conceptuality of it, you have paid for that, but...
We paid for the services that were provided up to the cancellation.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Nelson.
And Terry, that included the historical markers that we were going to put in that park.
I'm sorry, can you...
We were going to put some historical markers in that park.
I think that was part of the historic preservation.
That's what I recall. Okay.
Anything else? Member Stokel.
Yep. Terry, do you know, was there any conversation on other options for that money? And I say that, and I know, I think we want trees, but I also will say, like, a lot of the citizen complaints I do get are, I need my road resurfaced and repaved, too. So I don't, I get both sides and I guess that's what I'm getting at. Like, I want to make sure whatever the citizens need in that community specifically, if their streets are bad, I want them to have their streets repaved. If it is tree-impoverished, I want trees there.
So yes, we did have a community meeting on October 4th with the affected citizens of that particular area. We talked alternatives, what they would like to see. We did talk about tree plantings. There was a difference of opinion. The trees plantings would require the owners to maintain and they had some issue with that. But they did provide us feedback to move forward with tree plantings for next year. And we'll take a look at that. And we discussed the streets as an alternative for this particular funding. Next year, we'll include, you know, more beautification efforts with tree plantings and others. They also mentioned lighting as an alternative.
Okay. And I appreciate you sharing that because I think, for me at least, when we're making this decision, I want it to be what the citizens want in that particular community where they will be impacted. And then I think, as we all know with grants, when you receive a grant, there are certain stipulations. I mean, that's just what happens when you receive a grant. So thank you for doing that. That was my concern is, are we communicating with them? And it sounds like we are, so I'm okay with it.
Member Nelson.
So one other question. So if we transfer this back, then the city has the option of doing street repair, resurfacing, sidewalk improvements, lighting improvements, beautification, tree planting, and transportation improvements. So do we have an idea which way we're going?
This small portion that we're asking to be transferred back is the equation for all of those. It's not just going this particular, to streets, correct?
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? All right then, member Nelson.
Move to approve budget amendment. Move to approve budget amendment to transfer grant funds from canceled task order AECOM T-005 back to CBDG project account for continued implementation of the city's CBDG action plan.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Pass unanimously, City Manager.
Onto item 9A, which is ordinance number 412024, Building Trades Services Cleanup. This is the first reading of this ordinance, and the public hearing will be held on November 12th, 2024, at 6:30. On October 2nd, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 6-0. City Attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Right. And again, technically, this is the first reading and first of two public hearings. An ordinance number 412024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the city's land development regulations by amending Section 2854, Building Trades Services C, Standards for Primed Uses with Limitations, to incorporate amendments approved by ordinance 302022 and ordinance 292023, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
And Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have on this first reading of the ordinance.
And again, I would say, being the first reading, there's no motion, there's no vote, and very little discussion. Anything you want to add, Mr. Parrish?
This is, again, just a cleanup ordinance. The main part that you'll see, as far as the redlining, strike through of the code, is on page 171 of your packet. And if you have any questions about that, I'll try and answer them.
Counsel, anything? Any cards? All right, we move on to the next one. Thank you, Brad. City Manager.
Onto item 9B, which is ordinance number 422024, Outdoor Storage Cleanups Ordinance. This is the first reading and first public hearing. The City Council will hold the final public hearing at its regular meeting on November 12th, 2024. On October 2nd, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 6-0. City Attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Again, this is first reading and first of two public hearings. Ordinance number 422024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the city's land development regulations by amending Section 2854, Use Table, and Section 28151, Outdoor Storage, A, Districts Where Permitted, to correct amendments approved by ordinance 252020, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have on this first reading.
Mr. Parrish.
The main changes you'll see on page 184 of your packet strikes out this outdoor storage as a limited use in the M1 zoning district and the RMU 500 zoning. They were intended to be ancillary or secondary uses to primary uses on those properties that are zoned in those districts. You'll also see it on page 190 of your packet, a strike through change there as well. I'll try and answer any questions you have about that.
Any questions from counsel? Again, this is a first reading. There'll be no motion and no vote. I've seen nothing from counsel. Any cards? We move on from there. City Manager.
Onto 9C, which is ordinance number 432024, Conditional Use Permit Legal Add Requirements. This is the public hearing for ordinance number 432024. The City Attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 432024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to correct the unintended deletion of the advertising requirement for conditional use permit by amending Section 3472 Procedure for Obtaining a Conditional Use Permit, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
On October 2nd, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 6-0. During review of the Code of Ordinances, staff became aware that the requirement to advertise conditional use permits had been inadvertently removed from the Code of Ordinances. Specifically, a portion of Section 3472 Procedure for Obtaining a Conditional Use Permit was removed. However, after removal of this language, city continued to properly advertise all conditional use permit applications as required by Florida statutes. The ordinance proposes to correct the oversight by restoring the language in Section 3472 Procedures for Obtaining a Conditional Use Permit. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions for this, your public hearing.
Counsel, any questions? This is just a cleanup, but it is a second reading. Are there any cards?
Yes, sir.
Member Nelson.
Move to approve ordinance number 432024, Conditional Use Permit Legal Add Requirements.
I have a motion. Second from Vice Mayor. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes. Pass unanimously, City Manager.
We are on 9F, which is Rezone 3-2024, Titusville Resort Destination Master Plan Amendment. This is the public hearing, and the Titusville Resort and Destination Master Plan was approved on October 2021 by ordinance number 292021, and a site plan was approved by the city in October 2023. After those approvals, the city's Land Development Regulation, Section 2872, Assisted Living Facilities, was amended to permit assisted living facilities, ALFs, in urban village zoning district. Currently, the approved master plan provides for a total 340 multifamily residential units for Building F and Building G combined, Sheets 2 and ordinance number 292021. The requested amendment proposes 100 assisted living facility units in Building F and 240 multifamily residential units in G, see Sheet 4. And City Attorney will read the ordinance for the record, and Mr. Parrish is available for you.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 442024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 292021 by amending the master plan and conditions associated with the urban village UV zoning district on approximately 22 acres of land located at 3550 South Washington Avenue to include an assisted living facility use, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and an effective date.
Mr. Parrish.
The staff report begins on page 925 of your packet. I'll just summarize. As already stated, the application is for, to amend an existing governing master plan that governs this property on US 1, between US 1 and Hopkins Country Club and Norway's Drive. The property is about 22 acres. The amendment is to change the use of one of the buildings from multifamily development to, or apartment use to an assisted living facility. If you recall, several years ago, or a couple of years ago, you approved an ordinance granting or allowing that use to be permitted in this particular zoning district. Now, the applicant is going through the process to amend the master plan to allow that, to incorporate that use in the master plan now. We went through the review criteria for the rezoning, so this is requiring the applicant to process this as a rezoning. So we reviewed it against a criteria for that. It's in your staff report on page 932 of your packet. We made the following findings, and we'll make the following recommendation. Request is to allow a new use in assisted living facility, which constitutes a substantial modification to the master plan and requires approval by City Council. The request does not propose a change from the current urban village UV zoning declassification, simply amends it. An assisted living facility is a permitted use in the urban village zoning district. The request does not increase the number of residential units or square footage of non-residential uses proposed for the site. Based on that, staff recommends approval, the request for the substantial modification to this master plan at 3550 South Washington Avenue, with the rezoning ordinance described on page 940, I'm sorry, the conditions that you see on page 929 of your packet, which are attached to the rezoning ordinance. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Counsel, any questions? Okay. Jesse, you guys want to come up and talk a little bit? You are the applicant.
Hello. Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Chelsea Anderson. I'm an attorney at Mangrove Title &amp; Legal at 1530 U.S. Highway 1, Rockledge, Florida. And I am here with Jesse Wright on behalf of Titusville Mall LLC and JW Resort LLC. Thank you, first of all, to the staff for all their work on this application and this redevelopment project as a whole. As Brad said, we are here requesting the substantial modification to the existing master plan to allow the ALF use. And I think it was within the last year that we were before you requesting the text amendment to allow the use in the urban village zoning. Now that that's been approved, this is our next step, amending our approved master plan to allow the use. So currently, the approved master plan has two buildings that have multifamily residential. There's Building F, which is designated as a senior independent living, which is basically a multifamily residential building with an age restriction on it. And then Building G is just straight multifamily. And the current plan has 340 units combined in both of those buildings. We're proposing here to convert Building F from the senior independent living to ALF use, and proposing 100 beds, and then Building G would remain multifamily at 240 units. So still 340 units total. So as the staff report noted, we're not increasing any residential units with this modification. We're not increasing any non-residential square footage. And as noted in the staff report, there's expected to be a decrease in impacts on water, sewer, transportation, and parking because the ALF use is a less intensive use. It has less demand on those services than a normal multifamily use. We are concurrently processing a site plan to add the ALF use and incorporate it into the project, but we do have an approved site plan right now. The staff report notes that there are specific requirements for ALF uses, and we will meet all of those. We're currently meeting them during site planning review, including we have to provide some additional outdoor recreation area that is above and beyond what's required for the overall development, and it's only for the ALF residents. So we're meeting that. We'll comply with the state licensing, submitting the floor plans to meet the dimensional requirements. So we're working through all that with staff. And at this point, you know, my client, he, the reason for the change, he did some market analysis, found that this would be a good location for an ALF use. There's a need for it in the city so that people are not driving their loved ones over to Orlando for care. And we're excited to be moving this project forward. This is just one more step to get us closer to the completion of this redevelopment. If you've driven by the site lately, I'm sure you've seen-
Yeah.
-we're doing a lot of work. We are actively installing the, working on installing the horizontal infrastructure. So we hope that you will approve this tonight so that we can be one step closer to making this redevelopment project a reality. With that, Jesse and I are here for any questions that you guys have on specifics. But that concludes our presentation. Oh, Jesse would like to say a few words, of course.
Sure, thank you. Come on, sir.
Jesse Wright, 3461 South Washington Avenue. All we're basically doing is we're changing the independent senior living to assisted living, and that would be 100 units, not 100 beds. And that would be about 25 memory, uh, memory care and about a 75. It's gonna be a, it used to be a six-story, now it's down to about five-story. And the building, Building G, that, uh, as she mentioned, is, used to be like seven-story, like about over 75 feet, and now it's gonna be down to about six-story. So other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
And I would just say, I appreciate your effort. I appreciate you paying attention to the market, what's gonna work, what's not gonna work, and that's what I see you doing here. Anybody from counsel? Okay, go ahead and have a seat, guys.
I want to thank the City Council and the mayor for everything that you've done for the last few years. I want to thank the City Manager and the City Attorney and the staff, especially Brad, for everything that you've done. I see some of the similar faces going back a few years, and I want to thank you for everything you've done. God bless you.
Thank you for staying on it. Cards?
One card. It's Michael Majak.
First of all, I want to, I want to say I support this, this change. But I'm, I'm also curious, what are you gonna do about the stuff underground? Gasoline spill, that plume of benzene poison that's sitting in the ground that this building's gonna be sit upon?
If you're looking for an answer, I can only tell you that I've met with the county and Jesse, too, actually, and kind of got on top of it. And that would be more of a county thing because they're the ones who guide us. And basically, they are saying that the numbers aren't high enough to take action, but they're not low enough not to keep measuring. And that's the answer I got.
Some of the long-term exposure effects from benzene, besides anemia, excessive bleeding, there's damage to the immune system, leukemia, reproduction effects, and all kinds of adverse developmental effects. Now, you may not expect that in an assisted living facility, but if you're staying there and you're there long-term, and this stuff like radon is gonna be wafting up through the ground, through the ground floor, it's coming into the building. Cancer is going to be the result. We need to do something to clean this dirt out before you build on top of it. That's, that's my point.
Thank you, Mike. Any other cards? Oh, yeah, go ahead. Absolutely. You're the applicant.
So we have five parcels. Each parcel, we already have a environmental Phase 1 done. The assisted living has its own parcel, about two acres, and there are no issues within that parcel or any other parcels in the Phase 1. What he was referring to is the Cumberland, as you and I discussed in the past. And so that is something that we have to deal with at some point in time. Either you kick him out or you just, I'm thinking about many creative ways to do things, but none of them are normal.
Don't say I'm here.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Okay. Know the cards? Member Nelson.
Move to approve rezoning number 3-2024, Titusville Resort and Destination Master Plan Amendment.
Second.
And that would include ordinance number 442024.
Including ordinance number, say again?
442024.
442024.
442024.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Just to confirm, too, that includes all the conditions? There were conditions, correct, Brad? Yes.
Where the conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City Manager.
Onto item 9D, which is Small Scale Amendment, SSA Application Number 1-2024, State Road 405 and Singleton Avenue, PD North. This contains ordinance-
City Manager, hold that thought because I know where we're going now, and I know my situation, and we're gonna take a quick, I don't go anywhere. Quick five-minute break, and I'll be right back.
These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the city council swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
The staff and applicant, please ensure that all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card and presented it to the clerk. If there's anyone else present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit, or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed. So, and again, we can discuss your disclosures on D, and then we'll do that again when we get to item E.
All right, city attorney, give me again the procedure. It sounded like you said that we will hear D and E separately, or no?
Yeah. Item D is a separate item. We will hear the land use and zoning for item D and handle item D by itself. You will then move on to item E.
Okay. So, two very separate, totally different.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So...
So, at this time, it would be appropriate if there's any ex parte disclosures?
Say that again.
It would be appropriate to discuss any ex parte disclosures, if any, with regard to item B.
Anybody on council have any conversations or anything with anybody on this? Member Nelson?
Short conversation with Leslie Philpot, who was commenting on the hurricane creating a pond in her backyard. So, I guess it impacts it.
Anybody else, council? I see none, no discussions that we are aware of. All right, so at this time, we would...
We'll read the ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance number 37, 2024. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville by amending the future land use designation on land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Singleton Avenue and State Road 405 South Street from low-density residential to conservation on 5.01 plus minus acres of property, commercial high intensity to conservation on .49 plus minus acres of property, and from conservation to low-density residential on .63 plus minus acres of property, and commercial high intensity to low-density residential on 9.05 plus minus acres of property, having partial ID numbers 22, 35, 05, 00, 750, and 22, 35, 05, 00, 752, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 38, 2024. An ordinance amending ordinance number 5, 1993, of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Singleton Avenue, State Road 405 South Street, from the general use GU zoning district to the planned development PD zoning district on 8.11 plus minus acres of property, the neighborhood commercial NC zoning district to the planned development PD zoning district on 9.55 plus minus acres of property, the open space recreational OR zoning district to the planned development PD zoning district on .63 plus minus acres of property, having partial ID numbers 22, 35, 05, 00, 750, and 22, 35, 05, 00, 752, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Parrish is here for a presentation prior to the public hearing.
Counsel, I'm just going to direct you to page 209 of your packet. It's the second page of our staff report, and I'll just call out different pages of your packet to kind of describe this application and what's being proposed. On that page 209 of your packet, the applicant is proposing to change the land use of three land uses into two. And you can see on that table there called property information, existing use, future land use and zoning, and where it says future land use, that is existing land uses on the property, it's low-density residential, which allows five units, residential units per acre, commercial high intensity, which is our most intense commercial land use category, and conservation. If this amendment is approved, the result will be the elimination of the commercial high intensity, and the result would be a reconfigured conservation boundary and a reconfigured low-density residential boundary. Underneath all of that, you will see a planned development zoning governing everything with a master plan attached to it, with conditions attached to the PD rezoning ordinance. On page 210 of your packet, you'll see a comparison of the different underlying zoning districts, and the development standards of each, and the result at the end. So, you'll see there at the bottom of that page 210, area height, bulk, and open space requirements, and you'll see the proposed State Road 405 and Singleton PD, the PD rezoning ordinance, and the minimum floor area for each dwelling unit will be 800 square feet, consistent with the code for a PD. Maximum height will be 50. However, there is a request, I'm sorry, one of the conditions that P and Z, the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommended was to reduce that down to 40. Building coverage will be 40% because the property is located in, I'm sorry, maximum impervious coverage will be 40% because the property or this development will be located inside the city's area of critical concern, and that's our well field areas. Front yards for the individual townhomes, which are proposed as part of this development, will be 20 feet, front yard setbacks, and interior side yards will be 10 feet. The existing neighborhood commercial zoning district, which is underneath that commercial land use, commercial high intensity land use, will be removed if this amendment is approved. In other words, the land use amendment is approved and the rezoning is approved. These are two different actions you'll have to make tonight. And then the result will be the, I'm sorry, the GU, the general use zoning, will also be eliminated. There will be some portions that will be remaining that are OR or open space and recreation, but the majority of the site will be planned development zoning. If you look on page 211 of your packet, the density that's being proposed is...
Excuse me, to what?
I'm sorry, 211. You'll see a table there that illustrates the maximum density or the number of residential units that's being proposed. The current entitlement is about six units altogether, and what they're doing is increasing it to 70. But again, that's replacing the commercial. The PD, the planned development zoning district, requires that the applicant propose a minimum of 35% open space. The applicant is proposing that. Open space is supposed to be picnic areas, walking trails, recreation areas. The applicant has proposed that. When I illustrate what that is, I'll point it out to you in an exhibit. We are going to suggest that they enhance that with the submittal of their sketch plat. A townhome development requires an extra step, a plat. And so, if this rezoning, this land use amendment is approved with the rezoning and the conditions in the master plan, then the next step is to submit to us a sketch plat, and that is the conceptual drawing that needs to be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission for recommendation to you for the layout of this subdivision of land. Once that step is approved, then they go on to the next step, which is the preliminary plat and the site plan and engineering. At the sketch plat, we are recommending that at that stage they submit to us more amenities as far as recreation, and that'll be judged at that time. And that's one of the conditions we've recommended in the planned development zoning. We did go through the criteria as far as reviewing an amendment to the comprehensive plan, and we also reviewed the criteria of the rezoning against the criteria in the code. And I'm just going to shoot to the findings and recommendations, which are on page 229 of your packet. We've made the following findings. The comprehensive plan, if you leave your land use, small scale map amendment is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The rezoning and conditions of approval are consistent with the proposed land use amendment, city's comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations, including planned development zoning criteria described in section 33-8 and 34-40 of the code. The master plan was also reviewed against separate criteria related to a master plan. We found it to be consistent with the proposed land use amendment, the city's comprehensive plan, the LDRs, and the master plan requirements described in chapter 34, article 2, division 3 of the code. Based on this, the staff recommends approval of the comprehensive plan amendment. We also find, we would recommend that if that amendment is approved, that we also recommend rezoning, the rezoning petition, which is the planned development rezoning with the conditions and the master plan. We've summarized some of those conditions on page 230 of your packet. The full list of those conditions are in an exhibit as part of the planned development rezoning ordinance, which I'll point to in a moment. Some of the conditions I'm just going to highlight is, again, that they submit to us a final recreational plan to be submitted with the sketch plat at that stage, illustrating the proposed recreational amenities, including interconnected stabilized sidewalks and walking trails within the open space areas, and confirms with the minimum open space acreage requirement. Side setbacks will be increased by one foot for every two feet of building height over 35 feet measured from the bounding of the PD. The developers shall work with the city to adjust the layout of the master plan in order to preserve upland area, scrub areas and trees. And buildings may be relocated or rearranged outside of the required landscape buffers. So, if you remember, the plan is supposed to have, or this development is supposed to have, a minimum landscape buffer, perimeter landscape buffer of about 20 feet. Within that building envelope is where the buildings can be realigned. So, when they submit to us the sketch plat, and then subsequent to that, the site plan, it does not necessarily have to be 100% consistent with the layout of the master plan. If there's room for rearrangement, we'd like to work with the applicant on that, especially when it comes to trying to preserve trees. We also stated in the fifth condition here that direct impacts to wetland number one or wetland number three, in addition to that, which is illustrated already on the master plan, will require an amendment to the planned development. So, they are proposing specific impacts to wetlands as part of the master plan. If later on they decide that they need to do additional impacts, that it's going to require an amendment and have to come back before you. The planned development rezoning ordinance is on page 248 of your packet, but I'm just going to jump to two pa, I'm sorry, to page 255, rather, of your packet, and that starts the full list of the conditions that will govern this property. It lists the uses that are permitted, townhomes, common recreational areas, and then there are also development standards, including a maximum dwelling unit count of 70 for the townhome development. In addition, you'll find the amendment procedures here, which I've already described. On page 261 of your packet is the master plan. You'll see on that page 261, the proposed number of residential units and how they're laid out at that northeast corner, I'm sorry, northwest corner of South Street and Singleton. And the property, or the drive, or the road, rather, that will go through this development will connect to an existing subdivision stubout, and then empty out onto Singleton Avenue. They're proposing to conserve several of the wetland tracks, I'm sorry, the wetlands into tracks as part of the plat. So, you'll have, the entire development will be divided into separate tracks, parcels, if you will. Each parcel, some of those major parcels will be common areas, and those are where the wetlands will be located, and they'll be maintained by the homeowners association. On the next page, 262 of your packet, is the open space illustration associated with this master plan. The future land use map is on page 298 of your packet, and this is the side-by-side map that shows the existing land use versus how it will look if the land use amendment is approved. I do want to point out, again, that the commercial high intensity land use, if that, this amendment is approved, will be eliminated, and the acreage of the conservation land use will be increased from 19.6 acres to 24 and a half acres. The low-density residential land use will be increased from 9.7 to 14. On page 299, the next page of your packet, is the rezoning. Side-by-side, you'll see the existing zoning districts, the OR zoning, the GU zoning, and the, excuse me, the neighborhood commercial, the NC zoning, inside that subject area boundary, that red boundary. And then on the map on the right side, you'll see the result. Majority of the developed area will be in the planned development zoning. Just going to point out some exhibits in your packet. On page 307 of your packet is a preliminary concurrency that the city does with every application that comes in. We did not find a concurrency issue. They did submit to us a traffic study for this development, plus an adjacent application that is on your agenda tonight as well. There is an environmental report, the, on page 308 of your packet, it was submitted for both this application and these applications, your next agenda item. The traffic study, which is a very comprehensive study, and the methodology was negotiated with our engineer, is on page 323 of your packet. The applicant can describe more about that, but based on our findings, or our reading, we did not see the recommendations for any specific transportation improvements that were necessary to accommodate this development. The school concurrency report is on page 549 of your packet. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Counsel? Members Stokel?
Yep. So, Brad, if it were to stay as it is right now, this commercial and low-density residential, what would the access be if commercial and LDR were to be developed now? Would they have to come out on Singleton? Would they still connect to the neighborhood? Would they be able to go out on 405?
A commercial development?
Both. So, like, I know it's switching, I see the side-by-side. So, if, say, they didn't come before council, and an applicant were to come and develop it as the land use is right now in zoning, what would that potentially look like as far as the access points?
Well, the current layout, so I'm looking at page 298 of your packet, and looking at the land use map on the left side of your screen. So, the current configuration, the commercial, could potentially have an access point coming out onto Singleton or to South Street, if it's a retail development, which would be consistent with that land use. The property that, or the portion of this property that has the low-density residential just east of that, or northeast, looks like it would probably only be able to utilize the access point from that land use off South Street in that case. But there's nothing, if these are all owned by one property owner, they could be combined as one unified development, have cross axes between the different uses.
Okay. And I'm mentioning that because I know that's one of the points that got brought up, is the access point. So, if they were able to go out on Singleton and South Street, if it was to be developed now, and I know, as it stands right now with the application, it would be connecting to Highland Terrace. Does that have to still connect, or could there be a potential option for it to have access Singleton and South Street?
I believe the traffic study did look at that, that scenario. I don't know if that was their original intent, but our reading of that traffic study is there is an illustration that shows an access point going out onto South Street, and that was supposed to be a worst-case scenario.
Okay.
If you give me a moment, I'll see if I can find that in that traffic study. It does show, I don't want to presume until I see it, but I thought it did go to Highland as well. So, it looked at, it looked at all the different intersections and driveways to see what could be the worst-case scenario as far as distribution of traffic.
I could see, just looking at the map, I could see the neighborhood, you know, that's already there on Hillcrest and Highland. I could see it being easier for them to come out through this, to go through. I'm not so sure if this development would want to kind of cut through Highland. I don't know what the benefit would be, but that would be an option if it were to open up, and I will have to wait to hear from the citizens if that's a concern of theirs. I don't see how it would be quicker to go through the existing neighborhood, but I could see if they have concerns about it being connected. That was one of my, I have a couple other questions.
The illustration I was referring to is on page 354 of your packet, in the traffic study.
So, and this is worst-case scenario, you said?
I'd like to leave it to the applicant to describe that, but my understanding, that was my reading in this, is that they were looking at broad picture. If we had as many outlets as possible, or driveways as possible, what would happen?
Okay. And so, for me, as we move forward in making a decision, one of the things that I would want to know is what are our options with these? What would be the pros and cons of that, to make a decision regarding the access points? My second question is, I know they're proposing townhomes. Is townhomes considered in the low-density, or is it considered in medium-density land use?
It can be in both.
It can be in both?
Yeah, it just depends on the number of units.
Okay. And this one's considered low-density because it's a lower number of units proposed?
Well, the land use category is called low-density, and that has a maximum residential unit count of five units per acre.
So, as it stands right now, the number of units that they're proposing, they could propose, aside from the commercial space that's on here right now, they could propose five units per acre on the other portion that's already, already has the land use of low-density, correct?
Correct.
Hang on, I have just a couple more.
The page 261 of your packet on the master plan, they've identified, based on the approved land use, the land use would allow five units per acre, but what they're proposing is two units per acre, according to their master plan.
Okay. So, low-density land use allows up to five units per acre, and this, this piece of property already has part of it is, the land use is low-density. They're proposing two units per acre. Okay. That is helpful to know, thank you.
It's based on the approved amendment, as they proposed.
Correct. Okay. Building height, can you clarify what building height could be allowed now with the commercial and the low-density land you said is already there versus what they are proposing? What is the difference there?
Yeah, so the building height allowed in the commercial?
And the low-density. Well, I guess low-density will already, it's, they can't go above what's already there.
Well, the height is, is a development standard that you find in the code, in the zoning districts. So, in the, if you have to, at the GU zoning district, which is currently governing on this property, I believe it's 35 feet, I'll have to confirm that for you.
Okay.
And then the, and the neighborhood commercial zoning district may have its own separate zone, height maximum as well.
So, I guess what I'm getting at is, again, if they didn't come before council, and they were just to go develop this property as it, the land use and the zoning is currently, how high could they develop it versus what the applicant is proposing?
I believe I mentioned there was a table that I pointed out to you in the staff report that did that comparison. On page 210 of your packet.
Okay.
Yes, the neighborhood commercial zoning district has a maximum height of 35 feet, the general use zoning district also 35 feet, and same in OR.
And can you just restate again what their height they're proposing for their development?
Their master plan proposes 50 feet. The Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommended a condition down to 40 feet, and I recall the applicant concurring with that, but they would have to answer that.
That was, yeah, maybe I'll answer the applicant. I want to say at the first hearing that the applicant was in, was in agreement with all the conditions. So, okay, so the height would be 40 feet max, and right now it could be 30 feet, 35 feet. Okay, and then my last question is, or I think I have two more. Can you clarify if in the staff report, I know one of the concerns was flooding and drainage, how that was looked at by staff from what the applicant is proposing, how that is addressed, or if that might be a better question for the applicant, and I can wait on that one?
Is there a page or specific comment that, in the staff report? Can you, do you know, or do you?
No, that's what I'm asking you.
Okay.
If that, or when the staff was looking at it, if that was, I'm assuming that was part of, you know, looking to make sure that that was addressed, and I'm sure the applicant has addressed it on their plan, but if that could just be clarified, because I know that's one of the concerns that are probably going to get brought up.
So, stormwater requirements are typically looked at, at the site plan stage.
Okay.
So, we typically don't look at that here at the land use stage, unless we see something really egregious that needs to be addressed, and we may recommend certain conditions as part of this. We didn't see the need for that at this stage.
Okay.
So, specifics as far as how they'll meet the stormwater requirements will be dealt with when they submit to us a site plan.
Okay. And then, I guess, my last thing, it's more of a comment than a question. To me, it looks like just from going through this, our big thing that we're going to be looking at is, currently, we have about 15 acres of commercial and low-density residential. So, as it stands, it's developed, developable property. So, for somebody to come in and do commercial, somebody to come in and do low-density residential, 15 acres. What the applicant is proposing is to do 10 acres of low-density residential and then move five acres from low-density into conservation, which I think is a great thing. We're preserving that, because right now 15 acres could be developed. This is proposing 10 acres to be developed. So, that was kind of my, I would be, I would want to hear comments regarding that. So, as it stands, just to clarify, somebody can come in right now and develop on 15 acres. What they're proposing is to develop on 10 acres. So, if you're opposed to it, I would want to know, what are your concerns with that happening? That would help me in making my decision. And I think that's all I have.
Member Nelson?
And I agree with Member Stokel. I brought my trusty map. And as you can see, going through the city, coming through here, we have a lot of wetlands. And my thought, and I think council's thought, has been, we need to preserve those wetlands as much as we can. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm not looking, thank you.
Okay. We have a map of the city, and it shows where our wetlands are in green. And as you can see, starting Garden Street, let's start at Garden Street, it comes through, the wetlands come through the center of the city. And when I started out, one of the things that we wanted to do, and I think all of us did, was try to preserve those wetlands and keep them from being developed. My concern with this particular project is I want to make sure that there's no flooding, especially since we just came through that hurricane, and it seems like that 100-year flood, or 100-year storm is now, you know, every other year.
Yeah, every five years.
You know? So, I do want to preserve the wetlands, but I also want to make sure that we do it correctly, and that we make sure we don't flood anybody, and that we come up with something that is good for all of us.
All right, anything else on council? Brad, anything from you? Are you good?
Yes, sir.
I think the best thing to do now, and so you guys know procedurally, what we do on a situation like this quasi judicial, is the applicant will present. After the applicant presents, then we take cards, or whatever we do over here, we're still not sure, but anyway. So, at this point, I would like to hear from the applicant. Obviously, name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Good evening, mayor and councilman. My name is Anna Long. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Dean Mead. I practice out of two of our offices, 738 Memorial Road, Melbourne, as well as 420 South Orange Avenue in Orlando. With me today is also Alyssa Colby and James Taylor. They're both with Kinley Horn, who is the applicant, on, excuse me, who are the consultants on behalf of the applicant, and the applicant... And the applicant representative, Rich Frizzello, is also here to answer any of your questions. They will get into the technical aspects, but a couple of things I heard loud and clear that I just want to reiterate at the beginning and respectfully request opportunity for rebuttal. The north portion of this, um, development, which is item nine D, consists of, where did I do that? Thirty-eight acres total, okay? Fourteen plus or minus of those acres is developable, and twenty-four plus or minus of those acres are currently wetland, so a total of thirty-eight. This development, if it is, if the comp plan is approved as amended and the zoning is approved as amended, um, they would be preserving as conservation over twenty-four acres, so that you'd get back more than you currently have. And while you have a land use called conservation area, it's not under a permanent conservation easement. And moving through this process, as part of the process, they would then be designating that wetland area as a conservation easement in perpetuity through the permitting process with the water management district. So I just want to make sure we all heard that loud and clear. I heard earlier from the lady on the historic preservation board, how important it is to preserve the wetlands, and this applicant believes that as well. So without further ado, I will ask that the, uh, Kim Lee Horn folks address the issues of the conceptual plan at this point, as well as transportation, because I know those were two big issues.
The, yeah, they have a presentation that they want to show. Here we go.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alyssa Colby. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. Our office is located at seven three four one Office Park Place, Suite one oh two, Melbourne, Florida, three two nine four zero. So our short presentation today just went through, we want to go through a few different items. First, a few project highlights. Second, discussing the few recommending conditions of approval from the Planning and Zoning Board meeting on September eighteenth for this project. And then the third item is some items of discussion or concern that we heard from both the Planning and Zoning Board while they were discussing the project, and then some from some of the public feedback. So I believe this is in your packet, but this is from Exhibit B. This is the, uh, master plan that Brad was talking about earlier. So a few of the project highlights. First, I wanted to note and thank staff again for their help through this process. The applicant is in agreement with all the conditions, uh, of approval that staff noted and that Brad read earlier today in the staff report. I wanted to note that, and reiterate that he noted the project, the proposed project meets and exceeds, uh, the PD code, including the required open space and recreation. We also have adjacent residential units, both with the adjacent neighborhood to the east and then across Singleton as well. Um, and so with rezoning from this neighborhood commercial to, you know, it's got a split zoning where it's got the neighborhood commercial and, um, the general use with the, uh, different land uses associated with the commercial project and the LDR, low density residential, we'd be moving fully to low density residential, um, and conservation as land uses, but that is consistent with the neighborhood to the other side with, um, being residential units and uses as well. As Anna Long had just noted, we propose minimal wetland impacts, and I'll just go back really quickly. If you see, it might be hard to see on this screen, but, um, there's a light blue shaded area at the connection to Singleton Avenue, and that represents where our proposed wetland impacts are in one location, and then the secondary locations are on the eastern boundary near that connection to Highland Terrace. So most of those wetland impacts that we do propose, uh, they're just over a half an acre. They are for interconnectivity for the roadway. The reason we connect at that location on Singleton is to line up that driveway with the adjacent neighborhood on the other side. And so unfortunately, we would need to cut through that isolated wetland. However, as Anna Long noted, um, and Brad had noted in his staff report, we are conserving the additional wetlands. Next, we also are proposing additional wetland buffers. So if I go back to this, you'll see that red dotted line, uh, that kind of jags around the, uh, wetland area, which is the area in white. That's the, the wetland delineation that the applicant had done by their environmental consultant, and so that is the updated wetland delineation. And you see there's an offset, about average twenty-five feet from there to where the green hatching shows, and that's our proposed developable area. So we're proposing an average twenty-five foot wetland buffer on top of and past the wetland limits to help offset any potential secondary impacts to the wetlands. And so this is, usually we work through this with St. John's River Water Management staff. It's an average of twenty-five feet adjacent to all of those wetlands. And then finally, the small scale amendment proposes to keep the additional wetland areas in the conservation land use easement, uh, land use, as staff and Anna had noted. And then the only other item I wanted to note that isn't on this slide here is that with the existing neighborhood commercial use, um, there are a myriad of different options of somebody that could come in and, and develop it, uh, as, as Member Stokel had noted. But, but usually in James Taylor, who's our traffic engineer, can get into this a little bit more, but residential units, uses are usually lower generation of traffic than a, than a commercial use. So next, we'll move into the recommended conditions of approval from the Planning and Zoning Board, uh, meeting on September eighteenth. Uh, and Brad had noted a few of these, but we'll go through, and then I've also noted the applicant's response. So the first condition is reducing the maximum allowable building height from, they requested fifty feet to forty feet. Uh, fifty feet was the allowable within the PD zoning district, but the applicant is in agreement that they're, um, accepting of the condition to decrease to forty feet. Explore the traffic calming measures at the proposed connection point to Highland Terrace. So moving back to this master plan, you can see that there's a proposed connection to Highland Terrace. Right now, there is an existing roadway stub, um, and, uh, we're showing connectivity at Singleton and Highland Terrace to show interconnectivity, I think, uh, in, at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, it was discussed with staff that, you know, better design is to have the interconnectivity between the neighborhoods rather than having two isolated neighborhoods adjacent to each other for both emergency personnel, um, if needed, uh, or for just overall interconnectivity and flow. But, um, at Planning and Zoning, one of the conditions was to explore traffic calming measures at those proposed connection points. And so two options were discussed at the P and B board. One option was what was listed as a condition of approval, which is the traffic calming methods, and the other was making the connection an emergency access only with a proposed crash gate. Uh, the applicant is amendable to either option, and so they are in agreement and will agree to the condition, uh, of approval from Planning and Zoning Board. But it'll be noted that I think, from the overall general consensus of the public, they would prefer the latter of the two. And lastly, the condition to increase the eastern side buffer to seventy-two feet when the project is adjacent to the existing single-family development. So looking back at that master plan, there's only a few units that are really adjacent to that, uh, neighborhood to the east. And so the Planning and Board, Planning and Zoning Board discussed increasing that buffer right now, and you can't really see it, the call out notes that it's a thirty-two foot buffer on that south side of the road for the buildings adjacent to the adjacent Forest Hills Estates subdivision. Um, I'd like to point out that the, the minimum landscape buffer, uh, required is twenty feet, and so we do propose a thirty-two foot buffer there, so that is a significant increase over what is required by code. We also designed that intentionally because there is a large cluster of scrub oaks in that green space that's noted as recreation lawn, where we have the walking trails, kind of that breaks up those two buildings to the east, and then the remainder of the buildings in that row. So we did engage, uh, the applicant engaged a landscape architect to provide some preliminary feedback, uh, as we were going through this conceptual master plan, on some of the areas that would be, uh, that they would be interested in looking at preserving trees, large clusters that would grow and, and be cohesive together rather than the, uh, individual, maybe sparse trees here and there, and specifically over a, a certain DBH or, or tree width. And so with increasing that setback to seventy-two feet, um, it could put the project, the design right here, just in a little bit of tension with saving those clusters that we've identified, specifically designing around that, uh, and the buffer there. But understanding that the applicant, um, can agree, but they've also, uh, offered up that they would do enhanced landscape buffering, buffering in that buffer to the south adjacent to that single-family home. So in conjunction with the forty-foot building height and increased enhanced buffering in that area, um, they believe that would be another good option to discuss rather than keeping with the recommended seventy-two foot buffer, which, um, I believe the Planning and Zoning Board member just, they wanted an additional forty feet on top of what we're already providing. And again, reiterating the, the requirement by code is twenty feet. And then a few items of discussion or concern that we heard from, uh, you know, Planning and Zoning Board members as well as the public, that I, I kind of summarized a few of the larger, uh, or consistent items that we heard a few different times. The first is access to four oh five and South Street, and I know that that was brought up tonight as well. The, first I'll note, and James Taylor from Kim Lee Horn, who's the traffic engineer, will come up and answer, uh, and speak to some of the traffic study, but the, uh, site plan shown in the traffic study was an older site plan concept. Uh, before Kim Lee Horn was engaged as the civil engineer on the project, the applicant was going through some conceptual site plans with another entity, however, Kim Lee Horn was doing the traffic on the project. At that time, that concept was what was being thought of. Uh, that concept is not shown in this presentation, but it, it, it showed a connection to four oh five, however, it also showed that we were impacting all of the wetlands in that southeast corner of the project in order to provide the necessary spacing from Singleton Avenue to provide, uh, that DOT would allow. In our pre-application meeting on this concept for the master plan that you're seeing, DOT noted that, uh, they, they wouldn't really recommend a, another connection to four oh five for the north as for the south, because that one is a little bit more landlocked. They don't have the option of connecting to Singleton like the north does. They need the two connection points. And so the south, again, different entity, but it kind of plays into why this one doesn't have a connection to four oh five. They would be showing a connection right up to Singleton Avenue, and then the other, on the other side, providing the required separation that DOT allows. With that additional access for the south, plus the access that's existing for Singleton, DOT felt that it would be too many access points and not enough adequate spacing to provide another access for the north onto four oh five. They have, uh, stringent separation requirements depending on the speed of the road, and James can speak a little bit more to that, but that was why an access may have been shown on a, this, the traffic study originally. It was done a while before, and when this project was going, uh, and moving forward with this new concept, we had reached out to staff and asked if we needed to update, uh, some of the traffic study at this point, but it was done for a larger unit count with a very similar proposal of a PD with land use, you know, townhome or single-family units. And so at this juncture, they felt the traffic study captured, uh, a, a more conservative scope of the impacts could be. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that of maybe why there was an older concept done at that point. Uh, the connection to Highland Terrace, I outlined in, uh, earlier measures that the applicant is agreeing with the, uh, condition of P and Z approval for traffic calming methods, or the other option discussed, emergency access only with a crash gate. We discussed, uh, a, a lot of questions were raised about wetland impacts, and I, I'll reiterate, and not to talk it to death, but we did talk through that we're really providing minimal wetland impacts at really clear connection points for roadways, uh, to be strategic in the design, and we're trying to maintain and provide minimal wetland impacts for the adjacent wetlands on the property. It was brought up, uh, this was brought up at the last city council meeting by, I believe, Ms. Mary Spar, about that there is an adjacent point nine one acre parcel near the project that the applicant owns. Uh, it was discussed at the city council meeting, and the applicant came up and spoke that this additional property was not included in the formal boundary survey associated with the part, or with the sale of the other parcels. So when this project was started, the parcel was not owned, uh, and maintained by the applicant. And so at this time, they do own and maintain that parcel, however, it is primarily wetlands, as you can see in that bottom sliver, it notes where that wetland delineation kind of moves into that parcel. Um, and we had a meeting about this with, uh, city staff and with Richard, uh, the city attorney, uh, and discussed the following. This additional parcel will remain outside of both the PD boundary and the plat boundary. It's intended to be deeded to the HOA via a separate instrument, so not via the plat or the PD boundary, so to make sure that those items match what is being approved or requested for approval tonight. Uh, the applicant intends for this parcel to be included within the formal, what we consider ERP or environmental resource permit boundary that we will submit to the water management district, so it can remain as the remainder of those wetlands in a conservation easement. Uh, and this was discussed with the applicant's environmental consultant and, uh, confirmed. And then, as I noted, we had a meeting with staff and the city attorney on October third to discuss this plan of action, and all parties noted that this seemed to be a reasonable course of action that, uh, gets the project or gets the property put into a conservation easement, however, it will still match the plat and PD boundary because it'll be deeded via separate instrument. And then a few items, I'll touch on some stormwater, and James can touch on the traffic. Uh, I won't read all of this, but there are a lot of questions from the board, and so I wanted to put this into the presentation about what codes and what requirements we would need to be designing to. I know there's a lot of concerns about, um, development coming in and potential, you know, increasing known issues of stormwater or flooding. And so with this, uh, we would need to adhere to both City of Titusville, which is the local code, and St. John's River Water Management District, which would be the state code governing this county. Uh, and so there's multiple, uh, you know, City of Titusville has chapter thirty, they have section seven, which is their technical manual on stormwater, and I'd also like to point out that they're in, this project's in that area of critical concern, so we know that we're also limited to a forty percent impervious, uh, acreage total for the full, uh, developable project. And they have their own stormwater criteria that are above the standard stormwater criteria for a project outside of the ACC, just because we know the ACC is very, um, special and, and needs to be a protected area in the City of Titusville, and so due to the proximity to wells, and so there are additional development standards, including stormwater standards, that applicants need to meet. And then St. John's is governed by their environmental resource permit handbook. And so some of the things that we would have to go through, and as Brad noted, it would be later in the process, usually around the time of site plan or can full construction plans, um, it would be a, a, a water quality analysis, making sure we're providing the correct water quality and treatment volume before any water discharges off of our property based on what we are proposing. Um, we are not legally allowed to, to discharge more stormwater, uh, in the post-development condition than what we do in the pre-development condition. So what the current land does, uh, you know, we calculate a pre-development discharge rate. We work with staff at city and state levels to confirm that, and then we show that we cannot exceed that limit in our post-development analysis. And then we also analyze the, this, um, staging of like storm events, of running those larger storm events, and, uh, that ponds can recover and stay dry, that they, you know, we're not designing dry ponds that will be wet for longer than is allowable by code. As I mentioned, we're not allowed to discharge more. This is from City of Titusville, directly from the code, so just reiterating what we will need to work with staff on, and they will review to make sure that we are in compliance with these code developments. The first just says, "Post-development runoff for the development or redevelopment shall not exceed the flow, timing, or volume produced by the conditions existing before the development within, um, the applicable design storms," whichever one is, uh, applicable for this particular site. And then, you know, their release, stormwater shall be released at a rate in a manner approximately the natural flow, which would have occurred before development. So again, pre versus post. And St. John's notes very similar things about pre versus post, but that was a big discussion point at Planning and Zoning, so I wanted to make sure I took some time at the beginning and, and laid some of this out about the code requirements that we will be working with both city and state staff to show that we meet. And then I'll pass it to James.
Thank you much. For the record, James Taylor, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, I'm assisting out of the Orlando office at two hundred South Orange Avenue in Orlando. Um, as has been discussed, at some length tonight, there was a traffic impact analysis that had, needed to be conducted as part of the site. We actually combined both the nine D and the nine E parcels into one study, since they were in such close proximity, it was convenient for staff's review. Um, that, that TIA is something that's required of most of your development of any significant trip generation. We conduct those analyses per the city's code requirements, and then we also rely on FDOT, because this is a state act, uh, proximity to the state, um, roadways, State Road four or five, that they also have guidelines and standards that we have to abide by, um, even outside of the city's requirements. The, the TIA was done for two reasons for this site. As you, as you've heard from your staff, there's a future land use amendment that's being proposed, and what we do for that analysis is we determine what the impact is if the board goes forward with an amendment on the site for the maximum development. Uh, and then the second reason we do this study is to ensure that all the roadways in the study area of the site, and the intersections and the driveways are going to perform adequately per your standards and your code. Before we got started on that, we sit down with their staff, we make sure that all the assumptions that go into the study are approved by the staff. These are things like what other background traffic is in the area that's been approved that we may not know about. that we may not know about, what sort of growth rates, how the project is going to distribute traffic per DOT's travel demand models. These things are agreed to before we put pen to pencil and do the analysis for the actual site. Once the TIA is conducted, it's reviewed by the city, comments, some back and forth, those things get rectified, everybody's in agreement. And what's to come is there's also going to be some DOT review, not of 9D, but it will occur on 9E, but we did want to make sure the DOT was familiar with both of these sites because they, there will be some interaction of traffic and the driveway spacing issue on 405 also being resolved. I'm not sure what I did there. Pardon me, I hit the start over button. All right. So the study area for this site, as was mentioned by staff, portions of 405 as well as Singleton Avenue and intersections along 405, as well as the project driveways. One thing to note about this TIA, and there's been talk about this being a conservative analysis, the prior site plan did have a combined 196 units on both sides of State Road 405, and now that is only 132 units, 70 on the north, 62 on the south. We did not revise the study because staff determined that that was going to be sufficiently conservative for this application. Now, in the future, based on the change of access that was in the prior site plan on 405, we may need to return to staff during the site plan and make any tweaks, but the conversation with staff was, in looking at the capacity on Singleton Avenue, looking at the capacity on State Road 405, and looking at the load trip generation from both of these sites, there was not a need to modify the traffic for that access point at this time, but potentially in the site plan. All right, so something about the conclusions on both of those two options that we're looking at during the TIA. The future land use amendment did substantially reduce the maximum development potential once the amendment, if and when it is approved, is substantial by factors. So that we're taking a site that is currently zoned portions of it for commercial use, much, much higher intensity trip generation use compared to the townhomes. So this is what we would refer to in industry as a downzone in terms of traffic generation. And then, so the conclusion there is no additional traffic impacts are anticipated as a result of this proposed future land use that you have in front of you tonight versus what can be developed without coming before the board. And then for the capacity and the operational assessments, all roadways in the area operate within the city's and DOT's standards in this area with and without the project. No intersection deficiencies were identified as a means to mitigate any impact from the project, and the driveways were low enough that they didn't trigger any warrants for I think that was my slide. So we'll stand by with any Q and A once you have time to hear from the public.
Before we hear from the public, I can't wait on this. Come on up here, if you would.
Yes, sir.
I always seem to hear on traffic studies that there's no additional traffic. I don't, if that's the case, you're not going to make any money on that thing anyway. So that one always gets me shaking my head. The second thing is, and it's hard, Brad, for me to sit here and feel like we're doing a really good thing by putting more traffic on 405. I don't know that there is a more, a busier or more concerning road in my mind than 405. Help me. Help me. I mean, with no additional traffic, I'm not buying that. And, I mean, I'm just not. That's not the plan. If you're going to have more people. And are we not concerned about 405 as a staff? That's a concern road for us. That's a concern road for us, and now we want to add more traffic, although we're not going to add more traffic. Go ahead.
If you look at the land use amendment, or the land use map, side by side, you'll see that commercial that's still there right now. That's a vested right, so someone could come in and put a retail development and generate traffic on that.
And I might not be excited about that either.
Without an amendment, without a public hearing. And then the same thing with the area that's got the zoning of the GU that's potentially will generate some traffic, maybe not as much. But the question is, I guess what the applicant did in their traffic analysis as far as a land use comparison, is determine what the most intense uses could potentially be put on those land use categories, how much traffic would be generated as a result, and then compare it to what they're proposing to do. So that they're saying, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, that they're, the vested number of development, vested development rights on there could generate more traffic than what they're proposing.
Okay, could generate more traffic if we get another Walmart there or something like that. I'm not trying to be.
But that's under the current land use, so that, so they could go forward by right.
But when we're talking about a project, how many units? I've got it written down here, but anyway.
Seventy.
And then to say there'll be no more traffic on 405, I don't get that.
Yeah, let me clarify, Mr. Mayor, and add to your staff's. So when we do these future land use amendments, we're determining for the city who has a plan in place that has zoning set for each one of the parcels in their city, how much maximum development potential can be there. And we do things like put commercial by things like state facilities because that makes a lot of sense because that's where the traffic's at. In this instance, this applicant is proposing to downzone a property that has a commercial intensity on the zoning down to something much, much less than is in the current plan. So when, I simplify when I say adding no more traffic, what I should clarify to say is, as a result of this amendment, the potential for traffic to be generated by this site compared to what's in your plan now and compared to what's being proposed is a reduction. It's a downzone.
Okay, that's good. I got that off. Go ahead, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have one more question.
Member Stokel.
Yep. Could you just clarify, because I feel like the number of units did get a little bit confusing? Could you clarify how many units would be on each piece? I know we're on just the north one right now, but could you just clarify because I know it changed?
It did. So cumulatively, in the traffic study that was submitted to the city, a cumulative 196 between 9D and 9E.
Okay.
What's actually being proposed is 70 on the north, 62 on the south, which is a cumulative of 132. So about, a reduction of about a third.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Counselor, anyone want to add to that? All right, Clerk, you want to start calling the cards, please?
First card is Michael Mustard.
Oh, no, no, this is a different group.
Good evening. My name is Mike Mustard. I live at 2707 Hillcrest Avenue, and I'm glad you are asking those questions about traffic. I have a handout that Ms. Wells was good enough to pass out. I don't know if there's more than one. It's a three-page stapled, this got the small-scale amendment, application, number 1-24.
Yeah, 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 I got it.
That's the one.
I got it.
Yeah. First, I will go to, in the first paragraph, page 11 of 23, which is on page 218 in your packet, "Transportation Impact Staff Comments." And I'm not going to reread the same thing, but it establishes some very important points. First, it acknowledges the Highland Terrace stubout and the collector roads of Pointzetta Avenue and Highland Terrace are local roadways. That's very important. And it's, if you look on the second page, it has a map that makes it a little clearer where these things are. The proposed development is outlined in red. The light blue line coming out of it is Highland Terrace. It runs straight north and terminates onto Tropic. The next is the Pointzetta Avenue, and that's that little piece that juts out onto 405 you see there, but you can't get to that from Highland Terrace because they run parallel to each other. So connecting that is Hillcrest Avenue. You turned right out of the development. Hillcrest runs all the way up to Garden Street and comes out there right next to Pinchapenny. That is highly traveled now. So it's important to realize that the words on there, that the roads have very real impact. Also, that same paragraph under staff analysis said, to Mayor Diesel's point, "It will generate 524 daily trips out of that subdivision." Two different things. There's, there was the talk of traffic calming measures. That's a glorified name for a speed bump or other things to slow down the traffic. It was never about speed out of there, it was volume out of it. So if they went with that still, that's going to be a huge number, over 260 trips per day if it was 50% onto those residential streets is a huge impact. Also have to consider, none of those streets have sidewalks, none of them. There are kids getting to and from school buses routinely, there's families riding bicycles. To pump that kind of volume is.
Finish that thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, finish that thought.
Okay, is just untenable. But then the other part of it, so if they chose to not go onto Highland Terrace and all those were to dump onto Singleton, you know how busy that is now, you know, trying to get from Singleton onto South Street? If you put that many more things there, that's a massive, massive impact on the safety of anybody that uses that intersection.
All right, thank you. I got you. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
I want to say, first of all, I've lived in Titusville since 1956.
Name me an address for the record, please.
I'm sorry. Robert Preston, 2650 Hillcrest Avenue. My mother-in-law's house is at 2701 Hillcrest Avenue, where Highland Terrace cuts through, where they want to cut through. So I'm talking about two houses. Okay, what I'm, looking at section, the comprehensive plan and associated elements, Section 3440 criteria, whether the application is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and associated elements. Section C, the land will support proposed development and will not subject to flooding or other physical constraints as to not support the development. Yeah, I provided a package with some pictures.
We have that?
Yes.
I got, I got it then.
The first picture shows an overall view of the corner of the project. So that picture shows, if you look at Sereno Point, where that road comes out, directly across the street from that is wetlands. So they're talking about, this is the first picture.
I know, I saw that.
It's the second.
The second page, yeah. Okay, okay, okay.
Okay. My understanding is the road they propose to come out on Singleton is directly across from Sereno Point. Well, that's going to be hard to do if that's wetlands. The next picture, show, an overall picture of the neighborhood, it shows Pointzetta coming in, going around, it shows wetlands area marked off behind the houses off of Hillcrest. The third picture shows the end of Hillcrest, on the cul-de-sac, there's one stormwater drain, and on the other side of the stormwater drain, where the cul-de-sac is, is wetlands. And if you look at the last picture, it shows the other stormwater drains, which is down on Pointzetta. We only have two areas with stormwater drains. So where's all that stormwater going to go to? If you look at the area where they want to build, it's higher elevation with all the added paved roads, sidewalk, rooftops, driveways. Where's that water going to go? If it flows down and flows into the wetlands, it's going to overflow back into the backyards.
Next up.
Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue, and I do not live in this area, but I still have some very big concerns about PD North Townhouse development. This project is subject to the tree protection ordinance and thus requires 25% of the development area in tree canopy. Staff's report indicates the project includes a subdivision of 70 individually platted townhomes, lots. Residential subdivisions are subject to the tree protection ordinance, which requires 25% of the development area in tree canopy. Yet neither the site plan exhibit nor the open space exhibit designated tree canopy preservation area as required by the tree protection ordinance. City code requires a designated area of tree canopy is to be permanently protected in a recorded plaque condition or a declaration of covenants recorded in the county or city records. Now, maybe, the tree preservation area will be included in the sketch plan or the site plan, but it's not in what your agenda packet tonight. Staff recommends preservation of upland scrub, pine, and oaks and heritage trees to the extent possibly possible be preserved. Removal of heritage trees is allowed by the code, subject to the approval of the Development Review Committee. Unfortunately, this committee has allowed the removal of many heritage trees, including at the expanded U-Haul business. To avoid use of potable water for irrigation, stipulate native landscaping, which needs no irrigation once established. Staff has said that's a big concern. This project is in the area of critical concern intended to protect the aquifer. Low-impact development is defined as a land development that preserves and protects aquifers. Recommend LAD strategies and preserve pre-development topography and vegetation to prevent flooding. As we've recently seen, we now need to plan for 500-year flood events when designing stormwater systems. Take this into consideration as Singleton and South intersection already floods, and as these people are saying, they are concerned their backyards will be flooding. So take that in consideration. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you, Kay.
My wife and I have been residents of this city for over 40 years. We've lived in our current residence for over 20 years and raised our family of five children there. The reason we bought our home where we did is because it was on a quiet street, a cul-de-sac, and backed up to the wetlands. You've heard many concerns tonight from the residents. Our Planning and Zoning Board, instead of allowing us to hear hawks, owls, and eagles behind our home, which we all currently have, want to increase traffic noise and nighttime light pollution. Instead of seeing the woodlands and the wetlands, Planning and Zoning wants to erect 40-foot-high structures and within 72 feet of our backyards. Instead of Highland Terrace remaining a quiet residential street in our neighborhood, Planning and Zoning wants to increase traffic by hundreds of cars daily and add speed bumps. My biggest concern, however, is the wetland impact, which we have heard about already. I would like to submit two pictures of a before and after Hurricane Milton, please, if I may. The before picture shows the current state of the wetland during the rainy season. This was taken about three weeks prior to the hurricane. The second picture shows two houses down from my house, where you see standing water in the backyard of my neighbor. Unless we've forgotten, in 2004, we actually had three hurricanes within six weeks. So we have a very great concern. What about homeowners insurance? Are they going to consider us in a floodplain if this development goes through?
Good question.
We talk about this Live Local Act. We're asking you to please act on behalf of the people that live locally, pay taxes here, and have raised our families and conduct business in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question just as staff?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Member Stokel, I didn't see you.
No, it's okay. Can you, because I feel like this is probably going to be a continuing theme of, the property looks like wetlands right now, conservation, because nothing is there, but as it's currently zoned, it's currently zoned, low-density resident. But as it's currently zoned, it's currently zoned low-density residential. And so that's, can you just clarify that for, as speakers are speaking? Because they're saying that they're backing up to wetland area, but then when I'm looking at the map, it's showing that it's backed up to low-density residential. So I want to be clear on what I'm looking at.
There's three things here. You've got the land use, which is the land use plan, the comprehensive plan, and its land use categories on the property, expecting certain types of development under those conditions. Then underneath it, to help implement those land use categories, that comprehensive plan or the zoning districts. But then there's the existing conditions on the property, which is how it's being currently used. It's vacant. And so there may be some environmental constraints on the property. There may be some developable areas on the property. There are a few maps that help illustrate that in your agenda.
So I'm looking at 298 right now, where it shows the comparison of what, how it currently is zoned, which shows there's...
That's the land use.
I'm sorry, the land use. It's conservation, commercial, low-density. And the proposal is more conservation and low-density. And so I think that would, that's what's confusing me. As I'm hearing speakers come up, they're saying that they don't want the wetlands to be removed, but I'm seeing there is wetlands, but there's also low-density residential land use there already. So it's not like we're saying we're rezoning wetlands. It's where, whether or not we're taking, what I'm seeing is whether or not we're going to re, the land, sorry, land use, commercial to LDR primarily. Does that make sense?
Yes.
That's where I'm getting confused. Because I want to be clear. Because when you go, I think when you go and look at it, because it is vacant, it looks like it's all wetlands.
I would refer you to pages 302 and 306 of your packet. There is a flood hazards area map, and there's also a generalized wetlands map. But that's not, that map on 306 is not a survey map. They provided that in the packet. But this gives you an illustration of where wetlands are generally located. So 302 and 306, we look at flood hazard, floodplain, and wetlands. And that gives you an indication of what is buildable currently on the property.
Okay.
Are you good, Members Stokoe?
Yes, thank you.
All right, call the next card, please.
Trudy Ledford.
I'm Trudy Ledford, 2739 Hillcrest Avenue. What I'm hearing is maybe we need to go back to the planning and zoning board and maybe it never should have been zoned originally for low-density and commercial. Maybe it should have always been wetlands, because it is. The pictures, it's clear. And I invite you to come to our neighborhood and go in our backyard, if you can get back to, which you can't right now. It's very, very wet. So can we go back to the zoning committee and say, let's look at this? Paper maps are different than reality. And this is not what I was going to say, but that's what I'm going to say now, so thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Mirabale.
Thank you.
Hi, Sean Mirabale, 2770 Hillcrest Avenue. My first comments are in opposition to the road being proposed to cut through to Highland Terrace and into Forest Hill from the PD. In the packet, page one, is a traffic study done by Kimberly Horn that shows access road to the PD from 405. Page three is a survey that shows an access road to the 405. Page five is the planned land development regulations. And number three on 33-5 is, "The PD is to provide direct access to the PD without creating or generating traffic along local streets in residential areas." And page six is also the land development, excuse me, regulations. 33-8, number three, "The proposed development shall not negatively impact the quality of life for any adjacent residential uses. The negative impacts can include property value decreases and substantial increase in noise or traffic. This cut through should not be approved because it goes against the regulations." Number seven and eight show the site plan. And to the right, there's a primary impact area that was in the environmental plan. And this also shows where it backs up to Hillcrest. And there's an overlay of 72-foot buffer that goes from one side of the wetlands to the other side, which might help alleviate flooding. I don't know for sure. But if we look at the larger picture, Forest Hills is on the verge of flooding now. Water coming close to the back of many homes. The wetland holds a tremendous amount of water, but often it seems at capacity. The uplands absorb, and the uplands are the forested areas, absorb a large amount of water, not just in the ground, but in the vegetation and trees. If the uplands are removed and a PD built there, there's a very real threat of flooding in Forest Hill. The 60% pervious area, some grass and a few trees and a pond, will not absorb the same amount of water as the native vegetation in the upland. Also, the topography runs downhill from the upland into the wetlands, so there will be increased runoff.
Yeah, absolutely.
For these reasons, the property should not be rezoned, PD. This property is also in the area of critical concern. One of the last properties on the southern end, which is your page 10, I think, page 11. So it's, that's not developed. This is an important recharge area for the aquifer. It should all be conservation land to ensure the city continues to have drinking water, which is at risk. The city ought to purchase this property with the help of certain entities to ensure drinking water now and in the future. There's one opportunity to do this correctly, to preserve our water source and prevent flooding in Forest Hills.
Thank you.
Mayor, under...
Go ahead.
Mayor, I realize that, you know, speakers do, are providing documents for council's consideration. I'd just like to tell the applicant, if you have those documents, great. If you don't, and later you want to take time to review those for rebuttal purposes, let us know and you get those documents and review those.
How do you want to handle that? I mean...
If, I know they have a couple of documents already. If there are any documents the clerk has provided during the hearing that they don't have, I would suggest we can make a copy for them and they can review those before rebuttal.
All right. We'll keep you posted on that, but that's something I do. All right, call the next card, please.
Daniel Ledford.
Daniel Ledford, 2738 Hillcrest Avenue.
How you doing? Thank you.
I've lived in this area my entire life. My former address is 2739 Hillcrest Avenue.
I bet it is. I bet it is.
It's every young man's dream to grow up with woods behind their house, and that was my privilege. I grew up romping in those woods, hiking, relaxing, and sometimes camping overnight. My friends and I used to have to hike through knee-deep water in order to access the dry side of those woodlands, where there's giant pine trees, giant oak trees, yellow sand dunes, gopher tortoises, and bald eagles, just to name a few. It may surprise you to know, however, we didn't make our trails with the intention of going knee-deep in water each time we went to those woods. Do you understand what I'm getting at? We tried to make trail, our trails in the dry parts or in as shallow water as possible. They were, in fact, deeper parts of that swamp still. And at certain times of the year, in the right locations in that swamp, you could, in fact, find yourself waist-deep in swamp water. And I have two witnesses in this room that could actually stand up and say aye, that they have seen me, six foot three, let the record show, waist-deep in swamp water. Thank you. At one time, we did save a bald eagle out there, and we reported it to the FWC, who thanked us for our efforts. I know sometimes we don't care as much about animals as we care about money. I know that sometimes we don't care about heritage trees as much as we care about money or traffic impacts as much as we care about our money. But please, 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 can we care about the endangerment of the property owners of those whose properties border the Northside Project, including my own? Please heed this warning and please listen to these concerned citizens and conserve our homes by preserving our Titusville wetlands. The importance of this property as a drain field for the homeowners on Hillcrest Avenue and Forest Hills neighborhood cannot be overstated. This wetlands area is very, very important, as we witnessed in Hurricane Milton, where all of our water drained into there. The Singleton sidewalk is currently wet, and there is water over property lines and in backyards right now. Not to beat a dead horse, but please listen to our flooding concerns and do not let our homes be ruined by inevitable floodwater. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Well said.
Victoria Robinson.
Victoria Robinson, 2775 Hillcrest Avenue. I want to go on record as being opposed. I don't, I, it shouldn't be rezoned. I would rather take my chances with zoning it as it is. And if a commercial comes in, they come in, they would have less impact. There'd be no reason for any roadway. The traffic wouldn't be worse if it was a commercial property as opposed to all of these homes. Same with the impact to the wetland area. And even though it's zoned, or it shows only partial wetland, the entire area is wetland. It has been as long as I've been there. I'm at the very end of the cul-de-sac, so I'm where the one drainage is. And it can't keep up even with normal rainstorms, let alone hurricanes. I'm the end where the overflow is, so it's always flowing over the grass in the front. Luckily, my back doesn't get it as much, but the front does from the street, because it just can't go down the drain fast enough. I'm also the lowest part, right before you get to Singleton. So between myself and Singleton is wetland. On the other side of Singleton is also wetland. And that comes this way as well, along with all of the creatures that are trying to escape those waters. So I get the alligators and the raccoons and everything seeking some drier area, which is fine, totally fine. But I think it's very important that, that I hear them trying to wow you with, we're going to preserve the wetlands, we're going to do so much better. We're giving you more than is existing. I think I would take my chances with it zoned the way it is. I would ask you not to rezonate, not to change it. It was done that way for a reason, and I would prefer it stayed. Also, at the meeting, I'm not sure this, I don't know this gentleman's capacity, I don't know your title or capacity. But previously, it was talked about that there was no need for a road coming through, that it could be done without either foot traffic or just that emergency access. But if they have to develop it, if they're going to develop it the way they're proposing, then it can stay its own entity. It doesn't need to be connected to another pre-existing neighborhood. We're, it, there's too many people on the road, kids on the road, small, unless you want to come in and give us all new sidewalks before this happens. You know, you want to fix our drainage, we can't. It isn't, it's not, it's not going to work. It's not sustainable.
Thank you.
Mary Spar.
Okay, Mary Spar, Coco, and I'm representing Turtle Coast Sierra Club tonight. Sierra Club's concern is maintaining the integrity of the immense swath of forested wetlands you've heard so much about. At first reading of this item, I brought up a little 0.9-acre triangle-shaped parcel the applicant owns right next to the proposed PD North, but not included as part of the project. Having this parcel cut off from the rest of PD North's property would set a really bad precedent for the city, that you can create a small, basically undevelopable parcel of property, undevelopable, unless you cry property rights. Member Stokoe asked the applicant's attorney if they would agree to include the 0.91-acre parcel in the project. And the attorney indicated the applicant had no problem with including it. Now the applicant seems to be backing out of the no-problem-including-it statement and instead agreeing only to include the little parcel in a conservation easement from St. John's River Water Management District. In other words, include it as a conservation easement, but don't include it in the PD North boundary. Unfortunately, that does not solve the problem. Now, you might wonder, what is wrong with just including it in the conservation easement? Won't that, won't it be protected? The answer is not yes. It is maybe. The fact of the matter is that St. John's River Water Management District can remove conservation easements, can remove conservation easements if they decide to do so upon request of the owner. I was shocked to find this out on May 31, 2023, in a front-page article in the Orlando Sentinel. And then the next day, the Sentinel printed its editorial, "Six Acres: A Tale of Environmental Betrayal." Both the article and the editorial talk about a land use attorney who secured a conservation easement from the St. John's River Water Management District that, quote, "should have protected the property in perpetuity, essentially forever." But the district was persuaded to remove the easement, and the land was put up for sale. I have two more sentences.
Go ahead.
Okay. "Titusville's huge swath of forested wetlands running north and south is too important to take chances with. And Sierra Club asks you to take the time to get the boundary situation with a little parcel resolved, as the applicant indicated they were willing to do on September 24th. Please don't create a very bad precedent for the city."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Majak?
Say again?
Michael Majak, has he left? Okay.
We got more handouts today than we got all year.
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MIMS. And hang on to these because you're going to need them for the next item, agenda item also, but I wanted to bring them up first. So at the last, no, a month ago, you guys approved the city sending a letter that was a letter of support for a $500,000 feasibility study to, to look at exactly what we're, what we've been talking about, these large forested wetlands. And I'll read some of the things that I highlighted here. Some areas with the city's St. John's Stormwater Basin that currently discharged to the Indian River Lagoon presumably historically flowed west to the St. John's River prior to ditches that were created that diverted some of the flow east to the Indian River Lagoon. The older neighborhoods surrounding the areas where the ditches were dug have historical flooding problems due to various reasons, including increased water levels in the wetlands that they discharged to. So if you look at this map, it, it's like a giant funnel going right into the Indian River Lagoon. And Mrs. Severs was talking about the, the seagrass not growing well by their dog. Well, it's because they're downstream of the St., St., St. John Street culvert where all of this wet, what, you know, water from these wetlands is going straight into the Indian River Lagoon. That's why we have such horrible salinity around Titusville. But, you know, the, the, the other lady was right. If we cut down all of the trees on, on the uplands and, and replace it with rooftops and streets, then the percolation that's being done on those uplands that are next to the wetlands will evaporate. And there, there's already flooding going on, people have water in their backyards. The, the, and we don't know how many trees they're going to cut down. And, and these additional buffers that they say that they're having, is that just going to be green lawn or are they going to leave the, the trees that buffer the wetlands on, on these additional areas where they say that they're giving us extra protection for the wetlands? What, you know, the, the forested wetlands, they need forests along with the actual wetlands themselves. So, you, you know, you, you can't just isolate the wetlands and cut down all of the trees that are adjacent to the wetlands because then it's going to decrease the functionality of the wetlands. So we need all those trees. And the fact that they want to connect this development on, on going through Forest Hills, it's horrifying. That, that has been a, that, that neighborhood has been there since the early 1960s. In fact, a lot of the people that were driven off of Merritt Island when they developed the space center located in Forest Hills. I mean, I, I played with kid, my friends that were out on the island and then they had to move and then I played with them in Forest Hills. That neighborhood, very quiet, secluded neighborhood, has been there for almost 70 years. And so, please, you know, if you, even if you approve this thing, don't let them connect into Forest Hills. There's, there's no reason to do that. It's a horrifying, horrible thing.
Member Nelson?
Laura Lee, don't go anyplace. Don't go anyplace.
Don't go anywhere?
Don't go anywhere. So I sort of look at this and obviously they have the right to develop the property in some fashion. So part of me is like, I want to preserve wetlands and then part of me is like, but 25-foot buffers, I don't, doesn't seem adequate.
It's not a lot. It's like from here to that wall, maybe, less than from here to that wall.
So how, how do we prevent the flooding? Because right, that, that area is so low. Any suggestions?
I liked the suggestion that the city, and, and this is why we're doing the feasibility study, because it, they may end up, you know, saying, you guys need to, you need to purchase all of the uplands that are next to those wetlands. And we, those forested wetlands, there's no other city in the county that has anything like it. It's, they're very, very unique. Titusville's very lucky that we have it. And we're starting a process now of picking off, you know, the edges of the wetlands. And once you start doing that and then you're setting a precedent and you're like, oh, well, let's change the land use and the zoning here. And then that, that makes the next landowner think, oh, well, they did it for them, then we're going to do it for them. And you're going to end up with development all along this 405 corridor where we already have a huge traffic jam. And you're just going to start, you know, it, it, it will lose the functionality of the wetlands and, and the, the really nice amenity that they bring to our city and all the wildlife and all the things that we have that they don't have in Melbourne and Cocoa. They don't have rosy at Spoonbills and bald eagles and all the cool things we have in those areas. These are things that make Titusville special and unique. So that, you know, there's, there's no reason, there's no reason for you to change the land use and zoning, but you can't do anything about the existing land use and zoning. But I agree with the other lady that said, I'd rather take my chances with the existing land use and zoning than to create something that could be a lot worse. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up?
Laura Lee's a hard act to follow.
Yes, she is. I try not to do that.
Megan Moscosa, it's Merritt Drive. I'm one of the members of P&amp;Z that voted no on this project. But as you are aware, our code actually does not require two entrances or exits for this development. And I actually asked this question to Brad at the P&amp;Z. For properties from zero to 100 units, you only need one ingress or egress. This project has 70, and that's mandated by our code. So once our development is in excess of 100 units, two access points are required. According to Section 35.5, Section 2 of our Land Development Regulations, a planned development must be located in such a way that it provides direct access to an arterial or collector streets, which this one actually does, without causing traffic congested on local residential streets outside of the PD. And that's exactly that, what will happen with Highland Terrace if it's connected. The reality is, we're considered rezoning another neighborhood commercial area to PD. PD zoning, what they presented, this is just townhomes. According to our code, a PD is an alternative to standard zoning that allows a landover and the city council to negotiate specific zoning standards for a particular parcel. This is done to ensure that the resulting development is of superior quality while protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. This is written in our code. The, the goal of the PD zoning is to promote efficient land use, offer improved amenities, encourage creative design, and protect both current and future developments in the city. What I'm seeing on the planning and zoning is this is a very popular zoning for a lot of developers because it ups the height from 35 feet to 50 feet. And Richard Rosello, he is, I think he is the, he's from the development group, but at the planning and zoning meeting, we asked him about this. And he said, well, this project is simply going to be sold off to a different homebuilder. That means they will not control or influence the architecture, which raises concerns about the quality of the future development. So I urge you, please don't make a rushed decision. Please do not allow a secondary access to the neighborhood. According to Section 3454 of the Land Development Regulations, a PD must ensure that a protected area, that a project adheres to the highest aesthetic standards of the city of Titusville. But as stated, this project is being, is intended to be sold off, leaving very little assurance of quality control. The future land use for this area is designated as high, a commercial high intensity, and this project as proposed does not align with it. So I ask you to do your due diligence, negotiate as required by our code, ensure the project benefits both future and current residents of Titusville, please do not allow access to Highland Terrace, and hold the applicant accountable. If there's no concrete plan in place, why are we approving a rezone that will immediately be sold off?
Thank you, Megan.
Dan, can I talk on this?
See?
Can I talk on this?
Why not?
I mean, you, you, you talk about me not staying on the subject. I got four cards, I got four, four.
You live over there.
I got four cards on this, 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 this matter from, from the post office. Now, people are leaving.
I have nothing to do with that, Stan.
I believe so. I believe you do because I quoted FS 8, what is it, Florida Statute 838.022, false reports. False reports are, are considered a felony. And that's what I've, I've been talking to you guys about is it appears that, and that's why I've been, you know, reporting to the government and so forth, because City Titusville is doing all kinds of things. You know, I guess, you remember about that thing I said? Do unto others as you would have done unto you?
What?
Do unto others as you would have done unto you? My golly, I heard that in church. And, and, and I even heard it from our, our city manager before we hired him. He said, the main thing he does is he says, he applies his principle, do unto others as you have done unto, you know, what, what they've done unto you.
Stan, you talking about this?
Yeah. And, and the thing is, is that, uh, uh, there's another law that you don't want like me to quote, but I'm going to quote it.
You quote it.
Because I'm a professional engineer and I use this law, but apparently the City Titusville doesn't. You remember that law?
Water flows down?
You, you got it. Water flows downhill.
I got it right.
I'm serious. Water flows downhill. And the City of Titusville has repeatedly, and the thing is, is that in no case, as I, I heard it, this is the third time, I believe, the third time I've spoke on this project. When Bruce Moya had it once, and I spoke of it last, last time, it was here for the first reading, and I'm speaking again, is that I'm going to say again to you, water flows downhill and you shouldn't disobey it. And you've been disobeying it repeatedly by violating the stormwater management plan of Greater Titusville. This property is in that stormwater management plan and I do not see, Sarah Stokel, she mentioned, what about drainage? And she said, we're not going to have drainage considered until after this is approved. You got to be kidding. You're completely nuts. Conservation and drainage is tied, linked together. You cannot do it, but the City of Titusville can do it because they can do anything. They break all kinds of laws. That's why I'm here asking for city manager to be removed. Now, I'm supposed to have three times to speak on this, just like it was presented at the last public meeting. Three times, and I only chose one three-minute period. Now this time, I'm only limited to one three minutes. And I reject that, so I ask you for more time.
No?
No? No, I'm not going to do it. But last time, he spoke. City attorney spoke and said, I could have nine minutes. I only took three.
This is not that. Next up?
Good evening. Vicki Conklin, 2920 Royal Oak Drive. I'll be brief, but I wanted to compliment the residents. They really have worked very hard to gather their friends and their relatives and their neighbors. They've really come together because this is such an important issue for the value of their home and their quality of life. And I think we owe that obligation to really sincerely listen and try to work with them. And I understand that you're doing that. I think we need to preserve the commercial zoning, and I've spoken on this before, but we don't have a lot of commercial zoning left and we keep giving it away and letting apartments or townhomes build. And I think, as the residents have stated, if we preserve that commercial, it could be, it's at the intersection of an arterial or collector. It's a great place for, for just a little pizza shop or something like that, and that could work. I think the PD zoning is very questionable, as other people have stated. I'm concerned with the 40 feet. 40 feet is three-story, perhaps four-story, depending on how their ceiling heights would be. But nobody's really spoken to that about the tree canopy. What kind of protection would they have with noise and with light pollution that would be a result in their backyards? The connection to Highland Terrace is really an irresponsible plan. Those are existing homes. It's a small local road with no sidewalks, and it really isn't, is a disruption and invasion to that, to those existing homes. Signalization, if the project would be approved, I think was necessary. The traffic study was two years old. A lot's happened in two years. And I think we need to look forward and say, if we believe there's going to be a lot of traffic generated here, which I believe all of us would agree that it would, except for the traffic study guy, the rest of us think, if so, we need to demand that the developer pay for a signal, not wait a year later and then the city pay for signalization. Let's look forward and let's plan on that so that we get as much as we can that developers pay their own way. The intercept, to say that there's no deficiencies in that traffic, I don't think that's correct. And I'd like for us to look for the future. What do we want 405 to look like? I hear you talk about that, Mayor Diesel. Do we want a corridor that's three or four-story, essentially apartments, call them townhomes if you want, but they're essentially apartments? Is that what we want down 405 on both sides? Is that what we want? Do we want to look like Melbourne? Do we want to look like Cocoa? Personally, I don't, but it's a big decision to make. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Charlene Harper? Charlene Harper?
Left.
Okay.
I mean, to the left.
Well, I'm Charlene Harper and I live at 860 Hillcrest. And the traffic is so bad already that in order to feel safe to pull out of my driveway, I already have to back into my garage because the traffic's always coming. If I had my way, we would shut off Quinsetta and there'd be no through, through traffic. So for me, I hear when you're saying you're going to put in 132 residents, I assume that that's a home of two, so it's two cars. So now I've got that, that's about 264 cars added to my neighborhood. I'm already unhappy with the traffic that I have now. Probably had I done a study, sat in the driveway for a couple nights, a couple mornings, a couple afternoons, I wouldn't have moved there. But I'm there and I like it and I don't want it to change. However, with that being said, I wanted to address something that Sarah Stokel asked earlier. She asked, what about versus the commercial zoning versus the residential zoning? And my statement, have no way of knowing, I got one week's notice, I work every day, so I haven't had a time to go and check. If I did, I would have went and found out. Well, I have a single piece of land. When I bought it, had access to it, had a road, could move in there, could build on it. Now, my road's too narrow. I got to get everybody to give me a piece of their property in order to do it. So when that commercial was zoned, is it still able to be accessible? Is it still buildable as commercial? We don't know. So I agree, I would take my chances with that versus what's being proposed. But none of that's relative. What I am is a tree-hugging, animal-loving, want-to-protect, I cry when I walk out and I conch a snail. So the fact that my neighbor at 2759, the Lugo's, have Eagle's Nest in their backyard that's also currently flooded, I think the Lefferts might have had a picture of their backyard earlier. There's bald eagles there, there's black and, and go snakes in our yards, there are the red-tailed hawks. They're all federally protected by the state of Florida for their habits. So I don't need to talk about wetlands, I don't need to talk about anything. We have a wonderful piece of property there that maybe it's zoned but hasn't been developed yet, that has some of those things on it, I'm sure because they're in my yard. in my yard. So, I say let's protect some of the animals, let's protect some green, because one thing that's driven me, I have lived in Florida for thirty years, and I moved to this town because I thought it was a little sleepy town, it was great, everybody commented about no growth, no growth, they won't let us have anything, well now, we're like, we're falling hand over fist to grow, but at some point, we have to stop, because we're killing all of our natural resources, I hate driving up ninety-five now, used to, I'd be like, dang, I hope I can make it to the next exit before I go to the bathroom, because I commuted from Scottsmore to Jacksonville every day. Now, no worries, there is something on every exit all the way up there, potty break wherever I need it, but that's what we're doing here, like there's very little greenery left, so I don't have statistics, I don't have charts, I don't have maps, because I had one week to prepare, this notice came to me in my mailbox last Tuesday before we showed up. So, like the little signs are very small, couldn't see them, but I'm happy to be here, I don't know the format, oh, I forgot to like even name your, or net says you were supposed, you said I was supposed to repeat, like thirty-seven, two oh two four, and thirty-eight, two oh two four, I'm opposed, obviously, but, I mean, I think you guys are doing a really good job, and I was gonna speak last week, but I didn't, because everybody beat you guys up, so I think you got big shoulders, big shoes to fill, and I appreciate everything you're doing, but I appreciate the opportunity to say thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
But mostly, I don't want my neighborhood to be changed by more homes.
Thank you.
We can't handle it, but thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, last week was rough. Next?
The last card is Kason Childs.
Hello.
Hi.
Kason Childs, four seven six Fern, uh, I don't envy you guys tonight, it is tough, uh, hearing all these people speak, so I'm just gonna be real brief, start at the land, go to the sky, um, most people have already said there's a lot of flooding in the area over on, uh, Singleton and South Street, so this is on the north side, uh, I fly my drone, uh, most over Titusville, uh, right over that area, uh, like what, uh, I believe Vicki was saying, is the, the tree line, but basically, to start off with, if you have, uh, the high-density commercial, uh, you got a lot of asphalt that could just be laid, and, uh, and there could be even more serious flooding in that area, uh, if you put a bunch of houses there, at least there's some more greenery, uh, but I also am concerned for, uh, townhouses being placed everywhere in Titusville, uh, I would prefer it to be more single-family homes, uh, but that's really up to the developer, uh, because if it's zoned single or low-density, they could do either or, but, um, the next thing is that there's an airport just north, uh, well, really an airfield, so building any real higher than thirty-five isn't really a good idea, because it's, uh, whenever I fly my drone, it says it's an enhanced flying warning zone, uh, because there are planes that go in and out of there all day, uh, so putting anything higher is not really a good idea, uh, because even where my father lives, down off Sisson, uh, there's an airport and that's restricted, but they fly real low over there too, so, uh, building height is a very, uh, thing, very good idea you need to keep on, uh, so, but the one other thing I wanted to say was, uh, four oh five, I don't know about the north one, uh, if it actually connects to the four oh five, the South Street, but, uh, wherever these developments are being put in, I suggest you put in at the very least a slowdown area, or like a turn lane, uh, just to, because there already is a ton of traffic, I spoke about that at the planning and zoning meeting, that I really think you should put in slowdown, uh, slowdown lanes, at the very least, so, and I get the whole ambulance and needing to connect it to, uh, I forget what the other street is, but it's very hard to try to put in just like a gate to that only the ambulance and first responders can get through, because you know everyone's just gonna break it down, open it up, go through there anyway, so, that's it.
Thank you, good timing. All right, that was the last one. Uh, city attorney, do we need to get them all the stuff you talked about?
Yes, sir, I, I'd like, you know, give the applicant an opportunity.
Give her a chance to look at it and...
If she would like to check with the clerk to see if there are any exhibits that are provided to the clerk that were not provided to her, I'd say we take a recess, let them do that, and if there are, then we could provide, make sure she gets a copy.
Well, I don't know, let's look at, well, I'll see what it looks like in five, let's say quarter after, I mean, give them time to look at it, and if it's not, you need more time, we'll do more time, so ten minutes right now and we'll go from there.
To 11:30?
I'd say midnight.
11:30?
All right, I have a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30.
Second.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? I don't know if that counts because I didn't have the meeting back in session. Back in session. Does that vote count? I gotta do it again. All right, good. All right, city manager, help me out.
You've got, the applicant again has their chance to rebut, and then the council discussion. And any further questions of staff, and then your delivery?
All right. Rebuttal from the applicant?
Yes, thank you again, Anna Long, attorney for the applicant. Alyssa Colby and James Taylor will address this repetitive concerns regarding wetlands, stormwater, and traffic, but I would like to reiterate that the request this evening, if approved, will result in a less intense, a less dense development than is currently permitted by right. The downzoning of this property and the property referenced in 9E will result in more land placed under conservation in perpetuity, less intense development, because LDR versus commercial will have a less potential for higher traffic and trips. And again, if today, if the development is done by right, the commercial, in addition to the LDR, would result in more trips and more issues associated with concerns about the loss of wetlands. You're not approving a site plan, and you're not approving a stormwater plan. Those things will be taken up at a later date in detail by your staff as well as state and federal agencies, which also includes the Army Corps. You're asked to change the comp plan and the zoning, and regardless of the site plan that will eventually be submitted, we represent, we are presenting a project that is less intense. The wetlands are being preserved, we agree they should be. To address Ms. Farr's comments specifically, as the applicant's attorney, the applicant's attorney remembers what she said, and what she said was, yes, we will include the 0.91 acre wetland that was added to the property after the project was submitted, if, in doing so, we can confirm that it won't delay the process. But I assure you that if that is the case, we will figure out something else, which is when we spoke to the city's attorney and when we spoke to staff, and I said, we gave our word, we have to do something to make Ms. Farr feel comfortable that this property is not going to be left behind. With respect to her comment about conservation easements being released all the time, that's not a true statement. I was the environmental protection manager for Orange County for six years. That's not how it works. Conservation easements that are recorded in perpetuity for preservation are not just released because somebody thinks it's a good idea. However, she is correct in that, on occasion, conservation easements recorded in perpetuity are released in, partially released or in their entirety if one of two things occurs. One, the wetlands that are being preserved by that conservation easement do no longer have the same quality, ecological quality, that they once had, and that usually results from secondary impacts occurring, from development happening around them, or alternatively, because they weren't well maintained. The second reason conservation easements recorded for perpetuity are sometimes released is if the person or the entity asking for the release is offering up a significantly more valuable piece of property, ecologically valuable, than that which is under the current easement. That's it. That's it. And even though I look across my street every day at my neighbors slowly encroaching upon a wetland over time, over time, and their backyard's getting bigger and bigger over time, over time, that wetland can't be released. I know this because I asked. I'll let the others come up and address stormwater as well as traffic.
Good evening. I'm just gonna echo some of what Anna said and put some quantitative measures behind so that you can make as informed decision as you can. We did hear from one of the residents who were citing the staff report that this property was going to generate about 524 trips on a daily basis from those, from the 70 units. That's an accurate number. If you, if you look at the property across the street and combine these two, and there's a reason I'm combining them, I'll get to that, that's less than 1,000 trips from both of these properties. Now, when we did the traffic study and we forecasted out what the maximum potential was without a rezone, without a change of the future land use, I looked it up, it is 14,186 daily trips. So we're talking about a reduction between these two properties of a factor of 14 if this rezone goes forward. So I did not mean to insinuate that development does not cause traffic. The future land use will definitely decrease the potential traffic of this property, though. So that's the future land use portion of the evidence that's been submitted. Getting to the more realistic traffic intersection congestion points, level service, those items are kind of separated in the traffic study because the future land use is a state requirement. We have to show what the, what the additional impacts are. The, the operational assessment is for those run-of-the-mill things like, you hear from a, from a resident group, things like traffic jams and congestion and horrific, you know, times of days I can't get out of my driveways. I, I can't really speak to those points. I have a code that I have to follow. I have traffic counts that I have to take. I have an ITE trip generation manual that I have to go to, to quantify these and then compare them to what the code says is the allowable. So in the traffic study, that 524 trips we're talking about on a daily basis, that doesn't mean a lot to a lot of people. Let me give it to you in terms of a peak hour experience. So that's less than 50 trips that will be generated by these 70 units in the PM peak hour. So if you're, if you're sitting there in a chair on the street and this were the only street that were, this was the only street accessible from this property, you would see less than one car new to the roadway system as a result of this project. But this isn't going to just one place, it's going to two different directions on State Road 45, and it's going up Singleton Avenue. Of the portion that's going to Singleton Avenue, that's less than about 20%, and then the vast majority is going to State Road 405. That traffic, when you're comparing it to the level services and the delayed times that are acceptable in the city and the DOT standards, with or without secondary access, all of these study area intersections in roadways meet the criteria and are in acceptable service levels. So again, I say with and without secondary access because, as a reminder, it wasn't this developer that proposed connection to the neighborhood. The P and Z recommended either traffic calming or a gate and landed on traffic calming. Now, I'm confident in all my years of experience, we can do some things with traffic calming that will prevent that from being a cut-through route or severely reduce it. However, as you're hearing from your residents tonight, they prefer a gate, and this applicant, either way, it, it doesn't matter to the applicant. So the number of trips that we're talking about from this project that are not going to State Road 405, less than 10 trips per hour. We, we took the less than 50, we put 40 of them on 405, we're talking about less than 10 trips an hour that are going to use Singleton Avenue. Would one or two of those meander through a neighborhood on a local road and avoid Singleton Avenue 40 miles per hour operating at less than half the capacity? Maybe, I don't know why they would, but we can calm that traffic down if that's what the board wants to do. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alyssa.
Good evening, thank you all. So we were, I was taking some notes as everyone was speaking and raising some concerns specifically surrounding wetlands and stormwater. I know James spoke to traffic and Anna spoke to some general other comments. And so first with wetlands, as we wanted to talk through what the minimal impacts we're proposing. Another thing is, as I stated before, the applicant's environmental consultant performed a wetland delineation study. At the time of our submittal of an environmental resource permit through St. John's, they will meet with St. John's ecologists and biologists to walk the site and confirm those same wetland delineation lines. And so there are clear wetland delineation, and that is the area shown as uplands, and as confirmed by the study and the environmental reports submitted as part of this project, there is an area of upland preserve, and that's mainly the developable area that we are proposing on this project. So I just wanted to clarify because I know there were previous comments of, has St. John's looked at this? St. John's will not walk the site until the time of our ERP application. In the past, they've used to walk it at time of pre-application, but due to just a high volume of pre-application requests and staff requirements and concerns, they will only walk it once a formal ERP has been submitted, and that is usually submitted at the same time as our construction plans to staff. I also wanted to reiterate that this project, as Brad had alluded to, our next, the next step would be sketch plot, and that would come back through both P and Z and city council for approval. So this is not the last time that you would see something, and that sketch plot would have to show substantial accordance with the master plan. If anything, including additional wetland impacts would ever be proposed, that would need to come back through a master plan amendment, correct Brad? So the sketch plot would be the next phase. It's, it's not like this project goes directly to construction plans that only staff approves. The sketch plot and preliminary engineering design plans are usually provided at that juncture. A full stormwater report and submittal through the Water Management District and City of Titusville usually happen after that. However, some preliminary calculations are usually run when sizing stormwater ponds in conjunction with that sketch plot and that configuration, which is why one of the conditions of approval discussed is that buildings may be able to, to move within that developable area so that we can work around, you know, tree preservation. I know tree preservation was brought up a lot tonight. We will need to meet the city's tree preservation code. That is not something that is analyzed at the level of detail at the entitlement stage when we're requesting land use and zoning. However, there is a land use, or a, excuse me, a landscape architect already engaged on this project who has provided some preliminary input, as I noted prior, about some clusters of trees that she felt would be very valuable to try and save and design. of trees that she felt would be very valuable to try and save and design features around, and that landscape architect would be engaged to assist in making sure that we are meeting the required tree preservation code, including the canopy requirements for this project, assisting with any enhanced buffering. And with the canopy requirements, and you can correct me if I'm misstating anything from code, there's additional plantings that are usually required to meet those standards as well. And so, I think there was a concern about, is it just going to be green lawns and no new plantings? That's not the intention. However, at this juncture, for entitlements and for future land use and zoning, we are not detailing out landscape plans for review. A few other items I just wanted to hit regards to stormwater. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer general stormwater design criteria, but I talked through a couple in the presentation, so I won't completely bore you with something that I find super enjoyable and fun to do. But, you know, a pre-verse post-analysis is required for City of Titusville requirements and St. John's. You know, we cannot legally discharge, you know, more runoff, all the runoff that we want into the neighboring parcels. We have to analyze what the current parcel is doing in its pre-development condition and then analyze what our maximum then post-development discharge would be. The overall design is intended to be a interconnected series of dry retention ponds, and so stormwater runoff from those impervious areas that were noted. And I'll also reiterate that it's in the area of critical concern, so we're held to a maximum impervious area of 40% on the full site. Runoff from those impervious areas would be captured in yard drains, stormwater inlets, interconnected pipes, and then funneled into those stormwater ponds for storage and for treatment. Once a required treatment volume per St. John's and City of Titusville standards are met, it could be discharged up to the allowable CFS from the design report. So, there are a few different things that we take into consideration to make sure that we are not discharging more water, not discharging untreated water. And, you know, the stormwater regulations statewide for St. John's ERP handbook were updated in June, and so they are consistently making updates and changes that we have to be aware of as consultants when we are designing some of these projects, when those items take implementation. And so, at the statewide level, nutrients and, you know, nitrogen and phosphorus, as was brought up tonight for multiple reasons, the Indian River Lagoon are huge priorities at the state level as well, and they are making different changes in accommodation with those items. And I believe those were the main items that I wanted to just hit unless you have any specific questions.
You may have hit it, but I didn't hear it. There was a statement that this would be sold off shortly after the project is completed.
So, we can, Richard, if you would like to talk through that. Richard Rosello represents the applicant who is the developer on the project. He is working with multiple different types of home builders and so to provide their particular product.
Sure, I get that. And I'm not saying you can or can't do that. I'm just telling you I'd like to know what the thought is on that since it came up.
Did that answer your question sufficiently, or did you need him to come?
Well, I'd kind of like to hear what your thoughts are. Yeah, I'd like to hear from him.
Richard Rosello, live in 1111 Algarve Loop in Windermere.
All right. Well, basically, it was stated earlier that the plan was, and I'm not sure where that information came from, that after this is completed, we are going to move on from this project. So, I'd like to know what your thoughts are. And you don't have to tell them if you don't want to, obviously, it's your business.
Yeah, no, no, as typical, you have developers and you have home builders, and we are a development group. So, we go out, we acquire property, and we develop it for various reasons, entail it for various reasons. And as part of that process, then we get it to a certain stage, we sell it to a home builder or a end-party user, and they will go ahead and take that project down the road and develop it, put the roads, the infrastructure in, build the houses, and sell it to people like yourself, residents.
Okay. And certainly, you can understand the concern of people feeling like you guys are talking to us now, but you won't be here later. So, that's a concern I think that we're hearing. So, all right, thank you so much for the answer.
No, no problem.
Counsel, anything else? Quite pleased. Brad, you want to add something?
There was, I just want to remind you about the P and Z's conditions.
Say again?
The planning and zoning commissions, conditions, just want to remind you about them. They added two conditions on here, I'm sorry, three, increase the setback to 72 feet on the east boundary, propose the traffic calming measures with the smell of the sketch plot, and building height no greater than 50 feet, 40 feet. What they didn't do was recommend a condition eliminating that access onto Highland Terrace. There was some discussion among the commissioners who, on the minority vote, that wanted to see that. The majority vote approved these conditions you see here, recommended from the commission, that didn't include that specifically. There was been talk about putting a gate up. I don't know how staff can support it or not because my understanding, this is supposed to be a dedicated public road to the city through this plat process, and I don't know what the answer would be as far as whether that is acceptable to the city to have a gate on a public road like that. What other measures might be in place, I'm not sure, but I just wanted you to be aware of that, that if that is something that is going to be a condition imposed and accepted, I don't know what the outcome would that be later on, and if we'd have to come back to you to make any kind of amendment if that couldn't be accepted by Public Works. So, if there are other alternatives where putting up some kind of calming measures, that's something we could work through with the applicant through the sketch plot process and through the site plan process. If there are specific enhancements you'd like to see, or just a general statement that for them to work with us on that, we can do that. There was discussion about, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, about making it limited to pedestrian access only, but ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the majority vote, left it open to be a throughway. From a planning perspective, we didn't see any particular issue with that because it's an existing stubout of an existing subdivision, and having a pass-through to go to another collector road, from a planning perspective, we didn't see an issue with that. We actually saw that as an optimum option. So, I just wanted to put those two thoughts into your head about that particular issue, and if there's any discussion later on about eliminating that connection, what that would be. Staff, I just wanted to make you aware about the fact that there's going to be some kind of control of a gate that might be an issue later on. But if you decide to impose a condition or with the agreement of the applicant to eliminate that access point, I can concur that there's nothing in the code that says that this particular development is required to have a secondary access.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, my feedback on what I have heard.
Vice Mayor, could we continue to this?
Yeah, bring that down.
Yeah, thanks.
My feedback on what I have heard tonight, the flooding issues, and I think the attorney addressed those issues, when they get to them, they will do their best to try to handle that. Traffic, I know that, but I've seen, I had several friends who have lived in that area, and I remember the storms. I don't know who lives in that house, the first house on the right, if you're going north when you turn onto Singleton. They used to have a boat and stuff out there when it rained. That place used to just be full of water, and my neighbor used to live right on the street right next to that. So, I know it's a lot of flooding that goes on out there now, and that is, I can see that the neighbors are concerned about that. And I have, like the mayor said earlier, I have heard in my four years sitting here that the traffic study says that the road, and the traffic study is based on some type of mathematics that says how many cars can go here and go there. But what I do know is that it takes me, when I come up Bonner right now going north, it takes me, especially when the Jackson Middle School is getting out, it takes me two or three turns of the stoplights to get to the corner. So, traffic is making a difference, even though the roads may be able to handle it.
Vice Mayor, I don't want to interrupt.
But.
Vice Mayor, I don't.
Hold on, go ahead.
I didn't want to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure where phase we're at. Are we closed the public hearing and it's back to you now, or you finished with rebuttal? I just want to clarify that.
I thought we were, because we're rebuttal and it's on us now.
Yeah, we.
Did you close the public hearing? I just want to make sure.
We forgot to say that.
I don't think I've ever closed a public hearing.
Look, I just wanted to make sure the applicant was.
I think when she says there's no more cars, and we go to council after they give their deal.
I just wanted to make sure they were finished with the rebuttal.
You want me to say that we closed the public hearing?
I just wanted to make sure they were finished with rebuttal. I didn't hear that.
It looks like they're not finished with rebuttal.
Okay, my bad then. Attorney, always feel free to raise your hand.
I just, one point I forgot to raise before, there was a couple of comments about rezoning to a PD because it gives the opportunity for a greater height than low-density residential, which would be 35 feet. And as mentioned, at P and Z, they asked, and the applicant agreed to 40 feet. And I spoke to the applicant while we were out there, and if that relieves the concern of this board as well as some of the residents, they would agree to the 35 feet. And then, that way, the PD designation is no different than what would be allowable permissible under an LDR zoning designation. So, I wanted to make sure I stated that on the record.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you for the presentation. Anybody else out there from your group? Are we good? Okay. All right. Closed. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I want to state all that again, traffic is.
Oh, microphone. Microphone's not mine.
Do you accidentally hit the button and turned it off?
Traffic is, whether it's my imagination or not, and traffic is getting a little bit more difficult in Titusville. But what I really want to state, and as I've been sitting here for the last four years, and my concerns are, have always been the same and will probably continue during my duration here, I'm concerned about losing commercial property. That's my biggest concern, and that hasn't changed. And I will fight for the commercial property to stay if it's, I won't get into, but what I think that would look like, the aesthetics of putting some apartments and two-story apartments there.
Yeah, you said that before.
Because that's not part of the issue. But my concern is the loss of commercial property.
Member Stokel.
Yep, and Vice Mayor just kind of hit on what I was going to say. I appreciate all the comments that were made tonight, and when I'm looking at this, I'm thinking about our comprehensive plan, and this was a tough one for me because part of our comprehensive plan is preservation of wetlands and preservation of our commercial space. And so, we saw how the applicant had outlined how they would potentially add more conservation for us, but at the expense of taking our commercial space. And I think a few of the citizens kind of said it too, is they would prefer to take chances on it, of what potentially could happen there. And so, I feel like with the Vice Mayor, I'm leaning towards not in favor of this project because I want to preserve the commercial space as noted in our comprehensive plan.
Member Nelson.
Well, I have to say, this was a hard one for me because I really want wetlands. I want these wetlands going through the center of the city preserved. But on the other hand, that's a low area surrounded by wetlands, and at this point, I don't want to change it. I would rather wait for the stormwater study to come back, and, you know, that area floods, you've got the wetlands right across the street, it's, that area floods all the time. So, until we have that back, I sure don't want to change anything. So, that's how I feel about it.
I kind of spoke already, but I'll say a couple of things, and Member Cole, I'll let you follow up, but, you know, you heard my thoughts on the traffic study. It's a wetlands-heavy area. Safety's a factor to me. 405 and Singleton are two of the busiest roads we have in this city. Flooding's a problem. It was mentioned, I think, by Mr. Mustard, there's no sidewalks in the area, so you increase the traffic, you have a safety with kids issue. Increase neighborhood road traffic is an area of critical concern.
Right.
I like, I mean, you kind of said it all when the lady said, we'll take our chances with commercial. I think we, it's just different than having apartment complexes over there or townhouses. There is a concern that the project won't be under your tutelage before too long, and somebody else will come in and whatever was said tonight might not carry any weight with the next group. And most importantly, that stands up is that, and actually, Vicky, you said it, but basically, don't lose our commercial, and, you know, commercial zoning, don't give it away. And I think that I'm hearing that over here as well. We don't have a lot of commercial, we don't want to mess with our wetlands, and those two things make it difficult. That's not to take away from an excellent presentation by some excellent folks who do an excellent job of what you do, I have no doubt. But I'm here representing the people of this city, and I think it could be a great project, but I think I don't want to give away the commercial, and I think I have some real safety issues, and putting any more traffic on 405 or Singleton just makes no sense to me. Protected wildlife, that's important, too. Herman.
Well, I too was very conflicted on this. When I first got the presentation, I was all in favor of building the townhouses because if we did get commercial in and get the additional jobs in the area, we would need places for people to stay. But after hearing the citizens speak, I too was very much concerned about the flooding, and I'm sure that there are ways that the stormwater system can be designed to take the flooding away. And losing of commercial, the commercial area still. And one thing that hit me real hard was, I don't know if you said it, Mike, or not, about the sidewalks and the kids walking and the congestion in the area, the wildlife, the tree canopy. There are so many other things that come into consideration when you're looking at something like this. So, I too want to preserve our commercial area.
Anything else from counsel? City Attorney, am I good to move forward? With a motion?
If you're finished with deliberation and you're ready for a motion, you will be first having a motion on Ordinance 37, 2024, which is the land use, request for land use change.
So, move to deny the amendment to Ordinance Number 37, 2024, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Ordinance Number 60, 1988. Does that work?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
You.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. City Attorney?
Next, you'll need to deal with the rezoning of Number 38. I believe the attorney would like to speak before you do that.
We appreciate your time this evening, and we do appreciate your input, whether you think so or not, we do. We would like to respectfully withdraw our request for the rezoning of this item as well as the comp plan and the rezoning for 9E. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Anything I need to do with that?
No, sir. She's with, the applicants decided to withdraw their application for E and to withdraw the rezoning request on D.
Okay. Does that affect E?
She's requesting to withdraw E.
Item E in its entirety.
Okay, so, E is withdrawn.
Yep. And the rezone was also, on D, was requested to be withdrawn as well.
Okay. So, basically, we don't, you don't get to speak. So, we're done with that one. All right. We're going to take a recess for five minutes. Thank you. Thank you. (APPLAUSE).[546.88]